Okay, we have been advised that we have a quorum again. Thank you for coming back or being here tonight. Kind of in lieu of our, uh, our national anthem and our pledge of allegiance from last night, I'm just gonna read 52 words from 1788. "We the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution of the United States of America." So it begins with "we the people," and "we the people" gather here in our high school gymnasium for our town meeting as the embodiment of grassroots democracy. Medfield's town meeting has been taking place here, right here, on the eastern banks of the Charles River for 367 years. The fact that I find astonishing and really wonderful. It provides the voters and the taxpayers of Medfield with the clear access to their municipal government and allows the highest level of citizen participation. Town meeting has proven to be a valuable means for members of our community to voice their opinions and directly affect change in their community. Here in this tradition-laden American assembly, you can make your voice heard as you and your neighbors decide the course of government that is closest to you. Enjoy the evening. I would ask all of our visitors to please stand if they would, just for a second, so that we can collectively... And I'm gonna make a motion to allow all these folks who are standing as visitors to be welcomed to our town meeting and to sit within our town meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. I'd like to welcome Denise Garlick, who is here for a second night, our rep, and thank you. Wonderful job for Medfield. Thanks for everything. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go right to the lottery. We have Articles 12, 14, 15, 16, 18, 43, and 44. Then we will determine free cash at the end of the evening. When either 43 or 44 are pulled, we will consider them together. First article for tonight is Article 16. This is an article to appropriate the funds for advanced life support services. You can find this again on page 52 of your report on the warrant. This was advanced by the Life Support Study Committee, and we have a positive motion from the Warrant Committee. Warrant Committee member Sharon Tate-Cho.
Move that the town vote to appropriate $250,000, said some to be raised on the FY19 tax levy to provide advanced life support, also known as ALS services for the town, including as necessary hiring of personnel, contracting for services, purchase of supplies, equipment and materials, certification training, provided that the appropriation here under shall be subject to and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the town to exempt the funds from the limitations of taxes opposed by MGL 59, Section 21(c), Proposition 2 1/2, so-called.
Thank you. Sharon, do you have a report?
I do. During FY17, the town's use of a commercial ambulance service for advanced life support came to an end, and since that time, Medfield has relied on aid from neighboring towns that have ALS service when it has been needed. The aid being provided is not a long-term solution. Therefore, at last year's town meeting, it was determined to postpone a decision on how the town should move forward to provide ALS services to the residents until a full review was completed by a committee dedicated to studying the pros and cons and all the options before us. Over the course of the last year, the ALS committee has conducted an in-depth evaluation of the options, and the majority of the committee has recommended the option of the town providing its own ALS services. The fire department currently has two paramedics on staff, which is not enough to license the town as ALS-certified. The plan proposes to hire four paramedics and gradually move to a total of eight through a combination of training current EMTs or replacing retiring EMTs with paramedics. This plan will move Medfield into the ranks of the neighboring towns that provide ALS services to their residents. As a warrant committee, we have heard many opinions on the variety of ways our town can provide valuable ALS services to our residents. Even our committee was divided on the best way to move forward. However, a majority of this committee agrees with the ALS committee's recommendation to hire paramedics directly to the fire department. This plan allows our fire chief to manage the staffing to ensure that coverage is provided in a timely manner and with greater control than using a third party. We understand that there are long-term costs such as retirement plans, insurance, et cetera, but we also believe that it is prudent for Medfield to move towards an expanded paramedic staff to provide the ALS service to our residents. The warrant committee recommends passage.
And we have a minority report from Warrant Committee Chairperson Tom Murray.
The Advanced Life Support Committee spent endless nights and days to arrive at a recommendation, albeit not unanimous, to bring ALS to our town. Under the present Advanced Life Support Committee recommendation, for fiscal year 19, we would embark on hiring four new employees who will be certified paramedics. This creates a dilemma. A dilemma that once we hire a full-time employee, we own that employee for 40 to 50 years. Pension, health insurance, et cetera. With the current situation related to our unfunded OPEB liability, the idea of hiring four new employees is troubling. Combined and in conjunction with the additional costs associated with implementing and sustaining advanced life support, additional capital equipment, and the continuing education and refresher classes for the paramedics, Medfield increases its risk for additional financial This minority report is not against ALS. The belief is that our town does have the obligation to ensure that we get the right person to the right hospital at the right time to receive the right care. There are many times when our taxpayers make a choice without knowing the outcome. So in terms of an alternative, and one which will definitely have a different outcome for our balance sheet, other than seeing the town hire four new employees at first and then an additional four new employees, the suggestion is to create a new committee, a committee that would focus solely on regionalization. This issue regarding ALS has been coming down the pike for five years. We took last year at the town meeting and deliberated at the town meeting and decided at the town meeting to take a pause, pump the brakes. There are neighboring towns that do not presently offer in-house ALS. While some may think that we're taking a step backwards by delaying or considering an alternative, know for certain that if we proceed, we are taking a step backwards financially. Shared BLS and ALS services, or regionalization, exist, and they exist successfully in Western Mass. and Central Mass. and throughout much of our country.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, next we're gonna have a presentation from the Advanced Life Support Study Committee.
Let me introduce the presenters, but before I do, let me make clear what Article 16 is first and foremost for all of you. The first decision that you need to make is whether or not Medfield should have ALS in FY19. If you think it should, then the second decision you have to make is how much you want to pay for it. As Sharon pointed out, about a year and a half ago, we lost the intercept ALS service that we had enjoyed for a number of years based in the local hospitals. After a couple of attempts to replace that, finally, we wound up realizing we weren't gonna get any near-term replacement from contract services, and Westwood, Walpole, and Norfolk for the last year and a half have stepped in to fill the breach to provide us with backup ALS support. They have done that because they recognize the bind that we were in. Last year, about a half, about six months after we lost the, our existing ALS intercept service, the discussion at last year's town meeting was whether we should move ahead with ALS, and the price tag that was first floated for that was $750,000. By the time we got to town meeting, it was $600,000, and it became so apparent that there was not much appetite for that kind of a price, that we went into town meeting without an actual article recommending a permanent solution, but the selectmen did offer a contingency article asking the taxpayers to set aside $500,000 in the event that the mutual aid that we received from Westwood, Walpole, and Norfolk, if that fell apart because they got tired of helping us out, we would have the option of hiring a private ambulance service for at least part of the year, so we could maintain ALS. That article was defeated. But what did come out of the town meeting, as has been mentioned, was the ALS Study Committee. Our charter was to find a way to bring ALS to Medfield in the most cost-effective manner that we could. The committee has worked very hard. The option that the committee is recommending to the town has a price tag of $250,000 to the town. That's a function of increased cost to the fire department, and you'll get the details in a minute, but it also includes the expected increased revenues that come in, and that'll all be explained in a minute. I want to address the idea of regionalization. Regionalization is myth. If you think we can regionalize, I would love to hear the towns that you think have sufficient volume to justify regionalization. The only two towns that have come up are Dover and Sherburne. Both of them have fewer calls than we do. We pursued both of them, and they quite reasonably decided they would rather continue paying as you go because they have such low volume that they get support from other communities and they don't need to put any money up. Worse than that, had we joined with them, the price to do that, even with the most attractive private ambulance service, would have been greater than $250,000. So if you think that regionalization is an option, I'm telling you as the chair of the ALS Study Committee, that will not be an option this year, and the decision you will make is that we will not have ALS this year. This is a moral issue, and I'm not suggesting it's a moral issue if you vote for ALS, and it's an immoral issue if you vote against it based on cost, but make no doubt, this is an issue more than any other issue you're gonna discuss this year that does in fact affect people's lives. There's a cost with it, but there's a purpose to it as well, and I only ask you to think very carefully about that before you just jump to an economic argument one way or the other. To help explain what our recommendation is all about, we have Chief Hollingshead and Chief Meany here to make a brief presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. With your permission?
Please start. Yeah, thank you.
Bob Meany, 215 Main Street. So the chart of the way we started off is, we started on the premise that you wanted ALS, wanted advanced life support, and we moved on from there. We did look at a full range of options. We also looked at collaboration with other towns, which basically talks about regionalization. Walpole and Westwood have paramedics for their service, so they're set. Milis and Norfolk have made the decision within the past few years to also make the move, so they're beginning that process as well. So as Gus had indicated, we looked at Dover and Sherburne to see if we could come up with some sort of regional network there, and that was no. However, on the other end of it is that if we do it, they will probably call us, so it's one of those things, if you build it, they will come. So there'll be some revenue generated from that. We looked at various types of operational considerations for ALS. We really didn't want to get into this too far because that should be left to Chiefs Hollingshead and Carrico, who is sitting over there as our fire chief-to-be within the next week or so, who I will look forward to working with, and as much I hope as I looked, as I was able to work with retired chief Bill Kingsbury, who was a wonderful guy to be with. So other considerations, we looked at, what do we really need? What do we really want? What should the taxpayers of the town have? What might they be willing to pay for? So I put myself in this position a bit to think what I would want, and ALS is what I would want. I'll tell you, I've been a registered emergency medical technician since 1975. I gave it up a couple years ago. I ran the EMS here in Medfield. I ran it over for Wellesley Police, so I understand it pretty well, and when paramedics first came along, boy, what a difference it was in able, in the service that we're able to provide for people. Huge. Long-term revenue projection, we worked on that. We have numbers on that that will be discussed further on in the presentation. One of our, one of the members of our committee was a gentleman by the name of Brendan McNiff, a Medfield high-success story, who also was chief operating officer of a couple of private ambulance companies, which brought a unique perspective to it, is also extraordinary with numbers. So what we're presenting to you, we feel very comfortable with through all the work and through Brendan's work also. Thank you very much for that. And we had a discussion about how emergency services will evolve over time. It's difficult to do the crystal ball and sort that out. When I started years ago, just being an EMT, that was a huge difference, and you could see that ALS was gonna come. It did. This is rapidly becoming the standard of care. I would think that there's, you know, when everyone's home and tucked in bed, there's some 12,500 of us here, you know, snoring away, and probably a vast number of you assume that when you dial 911 and the ambulance comes, that you've got two paramedics, and right now you don't. So, you know, we thought you would probably want something more to that, and so that's why we decided to go with the ALS part. This is the study committee, the people who are on it, voting members on the top line, then Jeff Benati, who's lieutenant of the fire department, Brendan McNiff, I mentioned, Christine Trierweiler, who does everything and anything, and then Chief Hollingshead, and Sean Kay. Sean Kay, another Medfield high-success story, offered some very unique perspectives and kept us on the straight and narrow, and asked some hard questions, and we needed those hard questions to be asked. So, a little bit of this Gus has already gone over, so I'm not gonna take a long time with it, but on the left-hand side, when you see the word independent, pretty much think of Medfield Fire Department doing the work. So we originally started off somewhere around $600,000 plus to hire the eight medics, which was discussed last year at town meeting. Clearly got the message, nope, didn't want that, so gotta come back with another idea. So our first revision got us down to hiring four firefighter paramedics, which is where the majority of the committee is now, and that comes in around $400,000, plus or minus. And that, we will show you some numbers on that, but it's one of the first times that a hire of a town employee has considered everything. The OPEB, all the numbers, it's a very accurate number. So from there, you go down, how do you get down to the 250? Gus mentioned it somewhat in that, in enhanced revenues, billing that will come back to the town of Medfield as opposed to go to Westwood or Walpole when they come over to do the work, or such as, the other day, we had a run on Indian Hill, Norfolk fire came over, Norfolk did the transport, so we get nothing out of that one. So there's some revenue that's able to be gained and counted on in that method. Middle method is collaboration. You can read that as regionalization. As has already been alluded to, we did speak with all the area towns at various levels, with chiefs, with the on-the-street personnel at higher level in town hall, the town administrators, and came up with the idea, real clear, that everyone is content with what they've got, and they really don't need us to come along and be part of their system. They're not interested in it at all. We got that very clearly. So it leaves us, it leads us back to do our own. The full outsourcing, you'll hear about that later as another option. That is more expensive. It does involve hiring, you know, not hiring, we would be paying a private company to come in and provide us with eight firefighters, with eight paramedics, not firefighter medics, eight medics on July 1. So you may say, wow, we'll get ALS right away on July 1. Why don't we do that? And the other option that we've already talked about, the four firefighter medics, we will be able to work with the other towns. So the other towns will continue to support us and work with us. And one of the things that we will have that we don't have now, a lot of talk in the fire service about mutual aid. I really shouldn't get too much to the red team talk because I'm standing here clearly in blue, but fire departments depend on mutual aid. Right now, our firefighters, yes, they're doing mutual aid, no question about that. There's a garage fire in Walpole, over we go. There's one here in Medfield, over they come. ALS, they come here. It's one way. We can't go there because we can't offer that level of service, so we can really have mutual aid. So you'll hear some more discussion about the full outsourcing with the privates there. One thing I just mentioned is that through the years on that, there's a sheet that you may have picked up on the way in, some ALS key points and information. We had Metro West, they went out. We had Newark Hospital, they went out. We had a little bit of Milford, Whitemanville, they went out. We had events from Medway, they went out. Brewster came over and tried it for a while, but the business model doesn't work, helping us out, doing it that way. For their business model to work, they need to get a stipend, and that's just, that's just what, simply what the math is. So that's the brief introduction, and from this point, I will turn it over to Chief Hollingshead, our interim chief, who, this is, he's kinda like wrapping up his time with us here. I've really enjoyed working with him. I didn't know how things gonna be, truthfully, once Bill left me. And, you know, I feel like a little abandoned, it's like Darnum in this big building by myself. Chief Hollingshead came in, he's been a great partner, very intelligent, very open-minded. I've enjoyed working with him, and publicly thank him for the months he's given us and the work he's done on the ALS program. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, your permission?
Please.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. It's been a real pleasure being here in Medfield, if I may. Very honorable position in the fire chief following Chief Kingsbury. You should be very proud of your fire department, and that's what we're gonna talk about a little bit tonight, about your fire department. Very professional, permanent guys, permanent firefighters, on-call firefighters do a tremendous job. One of the issues that we're looking at is that Medfield, the ALS system per se is a system. You know, we talked about the fire service being a service, but you know what part of the real success here comes from, being part of a system? Our relationship with the hospitals, our relationship with the mutual aid communities is strong, could be a little bit stronger, but we'll look at that. I'd like to take the opportunity to also thank the ALS committee for the numerous meetings they had. I've only been here since September, and I know that they met before then. A tremendous amount of work on your behalf went into that committee and some of the decisions that have been made. Basically, the fire department, your fire department, is at the EMT level, and higher priority calls, advanced life support. And we look at this synopsis here, understand that we're talking about the addition of four firefighter paramedics. We're not talking about strictly paramedics, as we're looking at firefighter paramedics. So there's dual roles, there's dual involvement. We're gonna look at things like public education, getting people involved, but it improves the safety level for the community, but also for the firefighters that are here to protect you. ALS presently, as it's set, is that if we have a high ALS call, cardiac, pediatric emergency, a respiratory issue, allergic reactions, we have to call for an intercept. That intercept right now comes out of Westwood or Walpole. To the point of, I don't wanna say they're taxpayers, but part of the mutual aid system is that they've been very cooperative relative to providing service to our residents. Some of you have, might have seen that you, on long 109, once in a while, you've seen two ambulances pulled over. One is your ambulance, the Medfield ambulance, which is at the basic life support, the basic EMT level, hooking up with a Westwood or Walpole ambulance. Their paramedics are intercepting our ambulance. One or two, one of their paramedics, depending on the priority of the call, would get in the back of our ambulance, and we would transport to Norwood. And the way that billing system works is that we would bill at the acceptable rate, and the recoverables, we would have, the town would split that recoverable with Westwood or Walpole, whoever we shared services with, okay? So we wouldn't be getting the full 100%. If we do bring it in-house, we talk about the control, we talk about controlling the employees, a lot of discussion relative to benefits, et cetera, the OPEB costs, absolutely, that's a number, and I, my commendations to the committee, talking about the benefits. When was the last time you heard in an open discussion the very specific cost of health insurance and pension costs? This is, from my experience, this is the first time these numbers have been laid out to folks. Those are the numbers that apply to all town employees, not just the fire service, but also any other new hires in the community. So that's an important point to look at, okay? If you look at the slide that's overhead, that is the recommended course of action. Presently, as was mentioned previously, there are eight full-time firefighters in the Medfield Fire Department. There are 15 on-call firefighters. The on-call folks do a tremendous job if there's a certain box alarm, as we call it, they respond from their home, their jobs, whatever it might be, and they help support the Medfield community. They do a tremendous job. So out of the eight full-time employees, two of them are already paramedics. One of the eight is also an advanced EMT. He can do certain interventions, not at the full paramedic level. There is the opportunity for one or two full-time members to go to paramedic school, so that's an option as well. So if you look at the 12 there, our ultimate goal, initial, ultimate goal is to get the eight full-time paramedics. We'll talk a little bit about a PB level system. A PB level system is the standard of care in the state of Massachusetts. What the PB level is, is that uncertain advanced life support calls, you can have an EMT driving the ambulance and a paramedic in the back. You do not have to have two. So the statewide standard of care out there is what they call the PB level, a one-on-one. We are part of a region, and our medical control comes out of Norwood Hospital. Region four, and most people will agree, region four is one of the strictest regions around. When they talk about two paramedics, what they're looking for, if you were at the PB level, the one-on-one, you can deal with calling for an intercept to have that second paramedic. The hospital medical control would like us to call a mutual aid intercept to have that second. Goes to the real higher priority calls, okay? We're looking to add the four firefighter paramedics, like I said earlier, not just paramedics sitting around waiting for a call. Your Medfield firefighter paramedics will respond to every call that comes into that fire station. They will work for us. We will control all of the skill levels, any issues along those way. There are three levels. We talk about skill degradation for a paramedic. There are three, at least three levels built into our system. There's a state level, there's the region level, there's the hospital level, and there's also the internal controls that we, I feel very strongly about the people that are involved in the Medfield Fire Department as far as the control of the system. And like a lot of things, I think it's very important, from my humble opinion, is that you want to control the system, because if you don't control the system, then the system can control you. And I get a little leery about that, especially when it comes to advanced life support, okay? So as I mentioned earlier, we'll convert two existing EMT slots to paramedics and obtain an ALS license in conjunction with the mutual aid communities. Now, one of the things that we've had a long discussion on is there's a position up to the, to your left, there's two positions in yellow. One of those positions, what we're gonna call a supernumerary, in which in about a four or five-year period, depending upon the system, the fire department could be staffed at, there could be a 13th position. So we're not trying to hide anything. If the normal plan of transition takes place, that position should not be there, but we just wanna make sure the timeline and everything works out, that that could be there for a very short period of time. It's not, we're not looking to boost to the 13th position, but we wanna be straightforward and tell you that four or five years down the road... be straightforward and tell you that four or five years down the road, somebody can look at the numbers and say, well, it's 13. We just want you to be aware that that's there. So a little bit about the cost implications. It was mentioned earlier, as far as some of the numbers, and again, commend the committees to look at all of the numbers in that respect. Talked about the four positions, about $400,000 with the salaries. The benefits, total for the four is about $60,000. The OPEB cost, which you folks are on top of out here in the community, the OPEB costs about $20,000 in putting it into the system. So you're at the ballpark, you're at about $400,000 for the four full-time firefighter paramedics. Dual role firefighter paramedics. The increased revenues, and we've looked at that for a long period of time, and we looked at the generation of funds that has come into the community. Now remember, when we bill an insurance company, or Medicaid, or Medicare, whatever it is, they will send us back a rated amount of money, and if we've called in ALS intercept, then we split that, that recoverable as well. So we're looking at roughly $150,000. That's a very conservative number, as far as income to the community. That's where they come, we come up with a number of a net cost, and I think that's the important number to look at. Once the system gets set up, the net cost to you folks as in the community is about $250,000. So yes, at some point in the fire department budget, you will see the $400,000. But you do not lose sight of the fact that there's gonna be generating income. One of the few departments besides Park and Rec and other, that really contribute revenue to the community, into the general fund. And that's an important point to look at. Looking at 100% of the recoverables, going back here into the community, and building a system in which you folks will be proud of as part of this community. So the third person on the shift, there are four shifts in the fire department. Presently, there are two full-time firefighters on duty. They are supplemented on a regular basis with the call firefighters, but there are two. Adding the third firefighter paramedic gives us flexibility, in the sense that if we have an advanced life support call, the three firefighters will go out the door, at least two of them will be paramedics. If we only, if they determine that it's only a certain level of advanced life support, and the PB level allows the second paramedic to come back to the station, we are sending the ambulance to Norwood or Needham, wherever, the other hospitals that are out there, that second paramedic can come back to the station and be ready to respond to another call. Because we've sent only an EMT and paramedic out to the other hospitals. So we're improving the level of service here in the community. The medical emergency aspect of it is that certain cardiac calls, certain pediatric emergencies, honestly, I would like to have three firefighter paramedics at your door. You have a very good standard here in this community. We could put a firefighter, we could put a firefighter at your door in the average of four minutes. Now you think about that, you hear all the numbers out there relative to cardiac, oxygen loss to the brain, four minutes we can put somebody at your front door. Having that third person gives us a tremendous amount of flexibility relative to incident, ongoing, and another incident that could occur. Having the third firefighter paramedic on the shift also re, potential to reduce injuries. I don't wanna put dollars and cents on that aspect of it, but back injuries are part of our business. Having extra set of hands, along with the police department who respond, do an excellent job. Firefighting, that's a whole nother discussion. We're improving the level of fire service delivery here in the community. It's just not fire. It's all kinds of things. When you think about the times people have called for carbon monoxide calls, water problems, whatever it is, you call 911, and you get the fire department. And having that third set of hands initially is gonna make a big difference. So the bottom line is, part of this whole system that will, you are gonna discuss tonight, is about what's best for the community. And I think when you look at things, it goes back to the control. I've been very proud to work with the Medfield Fire Department, and Police Department, and all the other department heads. It's all about the system. And you folks here, you pay a lot of money, after listening to last night, you pay a lot of money. This is an instance where it's gonna benefit not only the 12,500 people in the community, but other employees and visitors that come through this, this fine community. At some point, we'll get to questions, will be my pleasure. But in all honesty, very serious discussion tonight, and obviously, I think you know how I feel, but I appreciate it. It's been a true pleasure here in Medfield, and good luck in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, next, we're just gonna have ques, you can stay right there, Chief. And we're just gonna have questions regarding the presentation in support of the positive motion. If you have a question, you can go to microphone number one or number two. Chief Hollingshead and Chief Meany and Slekman-Murby will answer those questions. Microphone number two. These are just questions now. We're not looking for comments. We'll have plenty of time for everybody to express their point of view. Thank you.
My name's Stuart Beard. I live at 301 North Street. The question I have is, how much lag time between the setting this all up, and we start getting some payback in terms of the revenues that might be generated? Are we talking six months? Are we talking a year, two years?
Question is, how long was the lag time? We have, presently have two paramedics on board, and in all honesty, we can get a PB level application and going, and we could honestly start to build that, put that system in place come July 1 with the presently, with the two paramedics. Understanding that if we move forward in this process, we maintain the arrangement with Westwood and Walpole as far as the ongoing mutual aid. So sure, one of the points you might hear is that we can have a private service in here, two paramedics 24 hours a day, parked somewhere. But we can build that system relatively quick. To be honest, it could take a year or two. But once we get to the four, and the two, we'll have six, one more firefighter goes to paramedic school, we'll be at the seven level, and we're almost at that full ALS license.
Microphone number one.
Hi, Bill Harvey, on Taboric Drive. The $150,000 in revenue, can you explain the underlying number of calls on an annual basis? And also, what fraction of that is just for Medfield versus what would be callouts and mutual aid for other, other communities such as Sherborne?
Okay. The present numbers that are out there, the advanced life support calls, and this is an interesting issue. The number of identifiable ALS calls for last, last year was about 146 ALS calls. Now, one of the issues that we looked at was as far as how do we balance and maintain our good relationship with Westwood and Walpole, okay? So the specific numbers, this year, we've already generated up to today roughly about $336,000 in revenue into the community. Our outgoing, our expenditures, the mutual aid to Westwood and Walpole, equates to roughly up to today about $66,000. So you do the math, we're pretty good. Once we start moving into a full control of the receivables, that number's actually gonna go up, and the net cost ultimately is gonna go down. So if it takes us a little longer, the net gain for you folks is gonna be quite substantial.
Please, yes.
I'd like to, that's one answer about how we're doing this year, but I think maybe part of your question was, how did we get to that model that you saw on the screen?
Yeah, just in a general sense, what does the model look like? What's the baseline callouts for Medfield? What's the assumed mutual aid that's going out, that service that we provide for others that are, that are not? So that-
The first answer to your question is that we didn't base that model on a certain number of calls. Call volume, there, we've based some of this stuff on calls, but that $150,000 is made up of three components. The first is that when Brendan McNiff came and first looked at our dispatch procedures, he recognized that we have the ability to change our dispatch procedures, and if we did, what would happen is, we would be classifying more of the incoming calls as ALS calls. So a call that comes in as an ALS call, you are allowed to charge a higher fee for an ALS response than a BLS response. When he looked at the way we've been doing it right now, and just looked kind of how we do it, he realized that we have opportunities to change our dispatch procedures, and when we do that, we will reclassify more incoming calls as ALS calls. And that alone will result, based on our past experience, that alone is $50,000 improvement in revenues. The second component of the $150,000 is that when you look at the actual ALS fees that Medfield is paying to Westwood, Walpole, and maybe to a lesser extent Norfolk, we are sending out $85,000 in fees to pay them for the intercept service that they're providing. And I think in a couple cases, they choose to also do the transport. So right now, Medfield is paying out $85,000 for the kind of intercept support we're getting from neighboring communities. What we're saying is, if we have an ALS capability here in town, that $85,000 doesn't go out, it comes back in. That gets you to $135,000. We then anticipated, we believe conservatively, that it would, if we had an ALS capability, we could expect to generate fees from Dover and Sherborne of a combined $25,000. That comes out to $160,000 total. We took $10,000 off that and said, because we, we have tried to conservatively estimate things, we took $10,000 off that and called it $150,000. That's where that number you saw on the slide came from.
Okay, thank you.
Three more questions. Microphone number two.
Hi, Erin Martinez, 393 Main Street. I'm actually wondering about outcomes with ALS versus BLS, and if we have any data on improved outcomes. As a physician, I've sort of looked into specifically cardiac, and it looks like BLS might actually have better outcomes in cardiac situations, specifically like more getting to a higher level of care, as opposed to like stopping on the, on the side of the road and getting a paramedic when I just get to Norwood. Do we have any data or proof that, that what we're doing or what we're planning to do will actually provide better patient outcomes?
Yes, excuse me. The data is out there, and I, I know that there are people can stand up here and, I mean, and argue against, but I'm gonna put a little reality shake to that. The BS, BLS level, there are studies out there that are very specific that say you can move very quickly and just get somebody to the hospital. Bottom line. The other aspect of that is that, in all honesty, the ALS intervention in your home with medications, cardiac monitor, cardiac intervention, in some respects is worth the price. Sure, can I, can we, yeah, there's studies out there. I don't have those specific numbers for you right now, but you and I both know they're out there. But the reality of this, what, what are we looking for here in the community?
Or in the next year, would we have a way that we would track it so that we could see, are we doing better? You know, is this worth the money, or if we, or if it doesn't pass, that we're missing out on something?
I'm sorry, once again.
I guess, I'm just saying, like, if, if, so if we proceed with ALS, I guess, is there a way to show us that we're actually having better patient outcomes with it? You know, as opposed to just that it advanced sounds better than basic?
One of the things I've, one of the things that we're working internally relative to is upgrading of the software system to control those things. But as you are aware of, every call that goes into Norwood Hospital, part of the quality assurance program, gets tracked and identified. So those outcome numbers are available in that respect. So obviously, we move forward in that, we will be able to put forward to the board of select in the community to be able to show you the benefit in that respect, okay? So those numbers are out there.
Yeah.
And obviously, when we get up and running and improve your service, we'll be able to put a more finite number to that to make it realistic. Thank you.
Microphone number one.
Sure. Ralph Manchan, 18 Summer Street. Two questions for you. So you showed the 400,000, and that to me is kind of like a static point in time. And as we talked yesterday with the increase in healthcare costs, the, you know, the pensions and the unfunded liability, what does that run rate look like if we're talking three years from now, five years from now? So is that 400,000 really, 500,000? And then what does that look like when we add the eight? And my second question is, and maybe you showed it, but I didn't see, but what's the outsourced number in terms of the contract and what that would cost?
We don't, this side of the fence doesn't have that. You might hear that a little bit later on. There is a history relative to some of the requests for informations that have gone out. So if somebody else wants to speak on that, they're more than welcome. I can't speak for what the increase in health insurance and those figures are two or three, four years down the road. But I, because I know that the, the OPEB actuary had, had very difficult time assigning a number to those positions, because there's so many things are variable relative to age, and how long you're gonna stay in service, and all those kind of things. I don't have that number for you, maybe somebody else might down the road.
Let me, once again, take, take another crack at that. First off, we did not try to model some sort of a multi-year, you know, what's the cost of living gonna be. The reason that we didn't do that is, we have no reason to believe that the increase in the cost for an internal paramedic is gonna be radically out of line with what the increase in cost for a private ambulance service is. We have no evidence that would say a private ambulance services are never gonna increase their cost. In fact, some of the, one of the proposals, one of the responses to the RFI we got, they showed a $50,000 a year increase from the first to the second to the third year. So the idea was that both sides probably do accelerate, and we just didn't try to model that. I think it gets back to the point that I started with, though. It's a good question around cost modeling. It doesn't get you, I think, to a fundamental answer on whether or not the town should have ALS.
And maybe that goes back to the person's question before. Well, is there a big difference in outcomes between the two? And I, I think if we saw that from a transparency standpoint, I think that helps make a better decision.
So let me answer that question again, from a totally unqualified guy who didn't know very much about emergency services until 10 months ago, when he was put on an ALS study committee and he was elected chair. I've gotten a little smarter. I, I read some of those. In fact, one of the studies that I looked at basically said, you know what's better than BLS? The bystander who knows CPR, who happens to be standing there when the person drops to the sidewalk. So we could probably eliminate all emergency services, because that study said, the guy right next, it had to do with speed, is what that was, that study, how fast you do it. I'm not an emergency service specialist. I'm not in any position, and I would suspect most people in this room are not in a position to actually do the technical evaluation about ALS versus BLS, to come up with any kind of a valid conclusion. When I wrestled with it, I said, this is an industry that has said the standard of care is ALS. The components of ALS are not just cardiac anyway, and my, my sense from our last discussion was the, with the medical director in one of our meetings, is that they've actually changed some of the protocols to not accelerate some of the invasive aspects of cardiac treatment that they might have done when some of those studies were done. I'm way out of my element to evaluate that. But my point is, I'm not in a position to answer that question. All I know is, the industry says that's the standard.
Okay, microphone number two. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jack Hunt, 71 Pleasant Street. We have on the fire department, I think, five EMTs, or six?
There are five EMTs, one advanced EMT, and two paramedics, correct?
They could be paramedics, right?
Of the five?
Of the six.
Yes, at least one is interested in going, we're dealing with the potential for a second, and that's a contractual issue.
Well, if Ford decided to be paramedics with incentives, we wouldn't have to hire anyone.
If you look, to that point, you could be absolutely correct. But one of the issues with that point, sir, is that there, there are some legal issues with that. There's also the point as far as when certain individuals are hired, they're hired a certain criteria. And there's been, there's been an offer on the table from the community relative to looking, to making that move forward. We can't sit here tonight and say to you, yes, we are going to force three or four other firefighters to go to paramedic school. That would go down a very uncomfortable path.
I know you can't force anyone, but there are, there are incentives-
That's correct.
-to give to people so they want to go to school and learn more.
Thank you very much. Well, a good point, and tons of work, that's right. Thank you.
Okay, final question. Microphone number one.
Aaron Kenny, I'm at 2 Kingsbury Drive. I had a question. I had a question. Did, I just wanted to make sure I was correct in hearing that the ambulance currently generates about, or it's already generated about $300,000 in revenue this year, roughly?
That's correct.
Has there been any investigation into a revolving fund that would keep those funds in the fire department so that in essence, I mean, that's a large chunk of what money is being presented that it's going to cost, right? If that money's kept in the fire department and doesn't go into the general fund, then it would in essence almost pay for itself, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I was...
Thank you.
Paul Hinckley, 106 Harding Street. I've been hearing a lot about the four-minute thing is really critical for...
Just want to, is this a question? We're going to have comments and points of view afterwards. Do you have a question for the podium?
No, I'll come back.
Okay, that's good. No more questions. So, we'll come back. Everybody will have an opportunity to be able to speak to these. I think at this point, we have a motion, right? Where's Steve?
I would like to amend Article 16 and substitute $700,000 instead of $250,000.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Kasky saying that the move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $700,000, said some to be raised on the fiscal year 19 tax levy to provide advanced life support services for the town. Okay, and we have a very short presentation. Why don't, Steve, why don't you give your perspective? You're on the ALS study committee.
I was also on the ALS committee with Neil O'Connor. Neil O'Connor was one of the people who voted for this and then towards the end, after seeing our presentations, decided to move onto our subject. He wasn't allowed to, we weren't allowed to revote. So, right now, it's currently four to two, but Neil wants to do a presentation on the private ALS option.
Okay, that's great. Why don't you step up to the podium with Neil too and if there are any questions afterwards?
Give you papers, Steve. The papers I give, I can't read my notes.
Okay, this is a presentation just on the motion to amend.
Okay, to start, Mr. Moderator? Okay. My name is Neil O'Connor. I've been a resident here in Medfield for about 45 years. I've been a paramedic in the past. I worked, probably last about 18 years ago. So, my time experience is not in the current mode and how they do things, is how things have done in the past. And I just couldn't see my notes and my slides on the screen, so, okay. Yep. This is my front page. Anyone hear me now? Better? Okay. My name is Neil O'Connor. I've been a resident here in Medfield for about 45 years. Twenty, thirty, 32 years ago, I actually worked on the ambulance here in Medfield in town. Had been a part of the fire department for a short period of time and left all that about 18, 20 years ago. I had gone through paramedic schools, so I understand what it is we're asking our current firefighters to go through. The difference in time, as you look at it, is a 140-hour program to go through, become an EMT, and it's an 1,800-hour program to become a paramedic. You're looking at 10 times the education. So, it is a big step we're asking them to go to, but I think it's some place that we should consider, and I'm glad the town is offering training to help them do that. How do I move this? The alternative option we're presenting here is for a private intercept model. This option presents a private company stationed in Medfield with two paramedics 24 hours a day, seven days a week. All the equipment, the vehicle they arrive in are all covered under a single flat-rate contract price. The private intercept paramedics will work in conjunction with the Medfield firefighter EMTs and our ambulance, much as we've seen in the past when we had Norwood Hospital, Leonard Morse Hospital, Events, AMR, and now we have Westwood doing that for us. This is, this is very similar to all those parts and pieces. How do I move this forward? Okay. Why would we advocate using a private service provider for the Medfield ALS needs? Simply put, the agencies are better equipped to provide this service from day one. I know we have the ability to do from the fire department aspect to start the service in pieces, but we don't have a full service system in place. By going with the private option on day one, July 1st, we could immediately start with two trained paramedics that are in town 24 hours a day. They can provide their fully qualified personnel and equipment, and over the longer duration, they have the ability to rotate their staff through high-demand assignments that provides them the opportunity to practice and retain the skills they've acquired during the training. And that's one thing that's just not possible with the staff that's dedicated solely in the town of Medfield. The other option or the other ability, the bonus we get with the private is they will manage all the obligations of full-time direct employees from staffing vacancies, overtime costs, retraining costs. This reduces the financial risks to the town. And then finally, we feel that this arrangement provides much better flexibility to the town as our needs evolve or regulatory requirements change. This contract will have a fixed duration with no obligation beyond the contract term. At the end of the contract, we are free to make changes and adjustments that we deem are in the best interest of the town, and we will not incur any long-term financial obligations. As we compare the two, the service level provided within the private option is better than the town employee option with two contract paramedics per shift rather than one. The private option provides much faster implementation, sustainable skills, predictable costs, and a more valuable method to adapt to future needs and conditions. Although the annual net cost for this private service is higher, it does not come with post-employment benefit obligations that are associated with using town employees. In summary, as we consider how to best provide ALS service, the problem facing Medfield as well as the surrounding towns is a capacity utilization issue. The demand for ALS service in Medfield over the past five years is remarkably stable at approximately 570 work hours a year. The town employee option will add 8,000 work hours of paramedic capacity to the system. That is for the hire of one additional person. It will be a challenge both to pay for this capacity increase and to assure that the personnel retain their life-saving skills acquired during their certification process. In addition, the town employee option will lock in these employees via the collective bargaining agreement. This will reduce our ability to adapt to changing conditions or pursue alternative service arrangements such as a regionalization approach. Given the financial challenges our town faces, it should be noted that the entire fire department budget has increased at a rate of 5.5% annually over the last 18 years. It would be a prudent move to add the fixed cost of this, to this department with the employee option that burdens the town financial situation today and well into the future. Using a private option at this point will provide the needed service immediately and allow the time to form, to more fully explore options that address the root cause of our ALS service dilemma, which is a capacity utilization issue. Furthermore, the ALS committee was charged to locate all feasible options, including any other technically or feasible options. That's where this option takes a smooth transition in service. We currently have two fully qualified paramedics on staff. One retirement in the next couple of years, as we had just heard about, that is by contract replaced with a medic. The fire chief has indicated he could find the funding at one point to purchase the equipment that would be needed for the ALS service. That was one thing that wasn't talked about in the last presentation. They focused on manpower, but nothing about the equipment needed to provide the service that we're looking for. Through the numerous discussions we've had, it's been discussed that there is public source finding, grant money, and other options. I would say, go get it. Start with the private service and let them get the equipment so we can start to do the in-house transition to our own service here in Medfield with the eight qualified firefighters that we have, two of whom are already paramedics. Next, next year, the new chief would have had a chance to settle in, and at that point, we could apply for a PB waiver. We could staff one shift with two medics and then cut our contracted service back to 25%. That's an option that starts to see where you can go and grow our eight-person department that is currently two paramedics and six non-paramedic staff. And we could, through service attrition, change and keep our staff of eight and transfer slowly into a paramedic system. It may take several years, but by doing so, we also do not have 40 years of employee obligations. The department was originally put together and staffed 24 hours a day. If you've gone back and looked at the research, it was always done to staff the ambulance 24 hours a day. We have that. It's what we need, it's what we want. What we want now is paramedic service. We're 25% there. Let's work with this system where we have one additional paramedic in retirement in the next two years. We have a great incentive program that's in this current contract that's been proposed, and I believe signed by everyone, that incentivizes several more EMTs. If they wish to transition to paramedic service, they can. And so, we can go from year one with full ALS service private. We can go to year two to 25% ALS private. In year three, we may be able to get to half our shifts covered ALS private. So, we take that big scary number of $700,000 and you start paring that down. And as we get to the end of this goal, it might be five or six years with still partial coverage with the private, we now have full service ALS in town with a similar PB waiver system that's already been very well discussed by the fire chief.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Okay, now we'll have questions from Mr. Kasky and Mr. O'Connor. If there are any questions, we're considering the motion to amend. Question.
Loud, 17 Kenny Road. Would like to ask if what you are thinking right this minute is that it, we don't need this. Well, I have both ends. I have elderly parents that live in this town as well as grandchildren who have medical issues. And if you are asking for nobody to be there to respond...
Excuse me, do you have a question?
Yeah. My issue is, why don't we have these ALS staff onboard? Yes, it's going to cost us money, but we have people trained. So, tell me why you're not going to train them, you're going to spend 700 whatever for training when it's 250 or whatever? If these people are here and willing to be trained, well, train them. These are valuable lives that live in this town, and we shouldn't have to worry about whether we have to go to Westwood or whether we have to go to...
Thank you. Do we have another question?
Hi. Dude.
Question.
Can I, can I answer that, Les?
Sure. I didn't get the question, but if you have a question...
I got a quick question out of it. There's no question about wanting ALS service. That is not what we're here. We are uniformly and unanimously agree ALS service is necessary. What we are offering is to go to a private service that offers us full, complete ALS service July 1st. No partials.
Okay, good. Microphone number two.
Steve Callahan from Petterzini Drive. First of all, I just want to thank everybody up in the front of the room there for all the time and effort you put in, for everything you do. I had a question in terms of, a couple of questions. One, what's the length of time that you anticipate this contract to be for? And then, second part is, is there any element of cost savings, of ability to direct this company to go into other, other neighboring towns and get some revenue?
So, the typical contracts are approximately three years, and then they can be renewed on an annual basis or whatever it is the town negotiates. And the negotiation is the key part to this option. The ability to go to other towns would be something that would be a matter of the RFI, the selectmen, and the fire chief in their department making those arrangements and agreements. I fully support that idea. Yeah. In the request for information that were sent out, we did get two responses. The 700 number is based off of that. In that 700 number, there were no other additional fees in the RFI for that.
And one last question. What's the difference between what you're proposing and what's been done over the last three or four years?
So, what I'm proposing has absolutely no difference than what we've seen for the last 20 years since they've started it, with the exception of two items. One, we're paying for it, so they're here dedicated to us. Two, they're dedicated to us.
Microphone number one. Question, please.
Hi, 9 Miniman Road. I was wondering what ambulance company has provided you the $700,000 estimate?
So, there were two bids. One bid was from Fallon, their bid was far more expensive. The second bid was from Armstrong Ambulance. Their actual fee was $850, $850,000 for the first year. Using the same math as the fire department proposal, there's $150,000 savings back for revenue that is recovered by the town. So, that's where the 700 comes from.
And what would guarantee you the quality of paramedics that you talk about? Why, as you said, they've taken away all the staffing and benefit issues. They would also take care of staffing. How would we have any control over who was in the town, whether there were background checks, whether they were a brand-new paramedic? How would we control that under your, under your thing?
Great question and easier than if they were our own. In the RFI, it is specified that any paramedic that works here has to be approved by the town of Medfield and specifically by the fire chief. And then, any paramedic that is working here through the private service, if we have any issue at all with that paramedic, the fire chief can ask for them to be dismissed and they will not be back to town.
And then, last question. This is, would be a three-year contract at a cost of $2.1 million to the town? Is that what you're telling us?
Roughly, yes. And it depends on how we can modify that with improving our own staff and starting our own service.
Question for microphone two.
Andrew Carey, Green Street. Are you opposed to mutual aid?
Am I opposed to mutual aid?
To the mutual aid system?
No, not at all.
Does that not provide immediate service starting today and continuing through July 1st while we build the system?
They do provide service.
Okay, thank you. My second question is, the $700,000, does the town lose the $300,000 of revenue that we currently receive from the ambulance fund?
The town keeps all revenue.
Town keeps all revenue. Thank you. And my third question, has the town has previously contracted with an ALS provider?
That we've paid for, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, but we have had ALS, private ALS in the past.
We've had private ALS that was a pay-as-you-go service. So, it would be for each call, they would get paid for the single call. This is the first and only time I'm aware of that we would have paid a service, a flat fee, essentially a retainer to stay here for us.
Thank you.
Okay, microphone number one. I'm going to leave the questions with the final four folks up here. So, no further questions. Microphone number one, please.
Hi, Caitlin Chincarelli, 18 Dover Farm Road. I know there was reference, I guess, I have a two-part question. One, at the end of the three years, so this RFI that went out, is it, is that price the 850? That's for those three years and that's, that's all that was discussed? Or does it go up each year? Like, it starts at 850 and then what's next year?
Yes, the RFI had the first year was 850, the second year was 900, the third year was 950, much similar to what Gus had talked about with the fire service increase. And that's why we sort of thought things were flat between the two. They both have increase in cost.
Okay, and so, if we use that same number, what happens next year? I guess, or this year, what if we can't get an ambulance service for that price? What if next year, we need more money? What happens, what happens then? Because the RFI is not binding, right? So, we have it for IFI.
And so, the RFI would then have to be resubmitted out as an RFP, and we'd hope to get more bids in that. In the process, we did do, we had three bids that came in. One was late and disqualified. We don't really know what that number is. At some point in time, if we do vote this way, we could resubmit for an RFP and see what we get back for responses. But using this as sort of our middle road number, we feel pretty confident that that should be the ceiling and hopefully is the high ceiling.
Okay, and then my last question. At the end of the three years, we know for sure that the price goes up even more. So, are we going to be back here again in three years?
I wouldn't anticipate that. I would anticipate we'd be able to build the department and within three years, I would like to think we'd have half the department shifts covered with paramedic service.
Can you explain how?
Yes. So, by having the private service start, what we would end up doing is we have our two current paramedics and have them continue with the PB waiver process. So, next year, we can start with a PB, similar to what the original discussion... So, next year, we can start with a PB, similar to what the original discussion was with the fire department. With that, we have one shift covered, 25%, 25% less provider needed, which means we have 25% less cost. Second year, hopefully, we have between the one hire that's a replacement, and maybe one of our fine folks will be through paramedic school. They could then be riding the truck, and we'd be covering half our shifts. So, this could stage down process, and that's the goal.
But how can we hire the four paramedics if we don't have the funding for it?
We're not looking to hire four paramedics.
So, we have the two, and then, how do you get the PB waiver without being able to hire more paramedics?
In, within the next two years, there's a retirement, and by contract is replaced as a firefighter/paramedic. So, that's three. And in their current contract, there's a very lucrative opportunity to pay for their training and to help them get through the paramedic training. And our hope and goal is that one or two, or maybe even more of them, will take the town up on that. And it's about a two-year program, so two to three years, I'd like to hope we have a couple more paramedics that are trained of our existing staff.
Okay, thank you. Microphone number two.
Hi, Carol Reed, 195 South Street. A clarifying question. On this sheet here, it says that the town used AMR ambulance...
No more questions.
Events EMS and Brewster in the past few years. The proposal that you have or the information that you have, that's not one of them that you'd be contracting with?
As of this point, we have not had a bid that's been accepted or submitted timely to be from any of those companies.
And the one that we do have is what service?
Armstrong ambulance service. They've been in business for 70-plus years.
Okay. Second question, thank you. And does Armstrong have an estimate for what they would do and charge for mutual aid so that we could reciprocate with the other towns? I know the initial information wasn't included, but...
Yeah, in the RFI proposal that we returned back to us, it was a flat fee to us. So, those are things that have to be worked out in the contract and in specifics of the RFP process.
So, so if we chose not to add that, would we not be able to help the other towns?
I, it was actually in there that mutual aid would be an option to use. It was one of the requirements of the RFI. So, I don't know the specifics. I do know it was specifically spelled out.
So, if we had private and we weren't opting for that, if we were out on a call with the private people, we would assume, and I'm just asking for clarification, that no one from other towns would come to help us?
No, actually, and you bring up another point. Right now, we have about 450 runs or so a year, and in the last year, they had about 146 ALS calls. So, with the private service system, with the two paramedics that are dedicated stationed in Medfield, for Medfield, 146 times, they would have gone with our ambulance and been out of town with our ambulance on a call. But the other 300 times, they would have been in Medfield. And so, if we had another call that came in, we'd have two paramedics with their equipment in town to respond to your home. And they would be there, and they would be there then waiting for the mutual aid ambulance that would then come transport whoever it is that was ill.
Final question, and microphone number one.
Diane Moore's Pleasant Court. The $700,000 that you had up on the screen, is that a solid figure?
That's a solid figure based off of the RFI information we received.
But that's just a request for information, not request for proposals or request for bids?
I agree.
So, it could be higher. It, it could be higher, right?
It could also be lower. There was another company that submitted a bid past the deadline who actually came to our meetings and gave us quotes of around $550,000 total. So, when they sent out that RFP, we're hopeful that they'll come in. So, we use the $700,000 number as a higher ceiling in hopes that that actual number will be around $550,000.
Why didn't you bring the solid number to the people of the town?
Because we're not allowed to do an RFP. I, I suggested that in the meetings. I, in one of our first meetings, I asked for that, and I thought that was very important so we could give the taxpayers an actual number. But we're not allowed to do that.
Okay, thank you. So, just to kind of set our bearings, we are going to, we're going to have a vote in a moment on the motion to amend. The motion to amend with the appropriation of $700,000. Before we do that, I'm just going to ask only for final, salient, compelling, if you will, comments that, that might make a difference. Leave this open just for a minute or two. Any, any countercomments that you want to make to those? Chief, you can step up in a second. Okay, let's keep these to one minute apiece, please. Microphone number two.
Hello, Mark Farrell, 8 Oxbow Road. I came here going to discuss between option A and option B. I was dismayed to hear an opinion to kick this down the road and do yet another study. That is not acceptable by any means.
That's not the motion. We don't have a motion to kick it down the road and not do another study.
It was an opinion given by the town.
Do you have a comment on the motion to amend?
Okay, so I'll get into that. I think that both these options, if implemented correctly, would provide a better ALS service than we have today, and better than what we had two years ago with the other private service. But the question is in the details of the limitation. As the previous question just asked, there is not a proposal for the $700,000. And if we don't have a solid plan coming out of meeting tonight, if for some reason it comes up more, then we would be in a really bad situation. And that, I think, is unacceptable. We, we need a solid plan. I've also heard so much about, we don't want to hire firefighters, they have obligations, they have OPB. I didn't hear any about that last night when we were talking about teachers and other support staff at the schools.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
On the amendment, Dennis Mann, 37 Janes Ave. Infotransparency, 31 years as a firefighter, EMT in the town of Sharon, in the last 13 years as chief. Fiscally, I think that the amendment is cost prohibitive to the members of the community. I think the, the best way to go is the original proposal, and I would encourage you to turn down the amendment.
Thank you very much. Microphone number two.
Yeah, I'm Ken Manning, 11 Pueblo Road. I, I'm, Scott, I'm asking for clarification. So, the, the amendment is to authorize $700,000, or authorize the board of selectmen to spend $700,000 specifically on a contract service? Or is it just $700,000 for EMS? That is, that $700,000 could potentially also be used to hire the EM, the ALS personnel by the fire department? I just want clarification on the, on the motion, please.
Yeah, I don't think, I believe it's just the $700,000, right? It's not, it's not defined.
Just to authorize $700,000?
Correct, appropriate, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Microphone number one.
Hi, Kristin, 4 Brook Street. I am asking that you approve the 250 asking price of the ALS committee. I've lived this, not once, twice. And I'm sure there's other people in this room that have as well. And when I held my lifeless two-year-old in my arms, I had people barreling through my front door who were wonderful, and they were kind, and they were nice. But guess what? They couldn't help my two-year-old. He was a limp, wet noodle, okay? You need paramedics in the town to do that. So, I'm asking that you move forward with the ALS committee recommendation.
Thank you. Microphone number two.
Tom Cahill, Main Street. Can I preface my comment with a quick question? Is the $700,000 annually based on that that's full-time, that this company will be in town?
Yes, full-time, two people, truck, vehicle, everything they use.
Is there a concern that as we start to implement PBs and pull 25% this year, 50% the next year, what company is going to want to remain in Medfield knowing that their services are dwindling annually?
I was not able to have that discussion with Armstrong. I did have that discussion with a couple other companies, and most companies feel that would be something that would be acceptable for them because they see the long-term solution is to go in-house in most places, but realize it needs to be implemented smoothly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Microphone number one. These are our final comments, these three comments.
Laurel Scotty, 10 Green Street. ALS is a necessity, and it's not an addition to services. We've always, always had it in one way or another. So, we have been very lucky first not to have to measure outcomes because we've always had it and must have it. But to have a contract that's actually $850,000, you have no idea whether or not it will be reduced if the services are not required. I've dealt with a lot of contracts. That has to be spelled out, and that is not there. The chief has given us a very clear description of what will be done, as well as the ALS committee, and we must, I strongly hope that we all vote for the committee's recommendation for the $250,000.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
Aaron Kenny, 2 Kingsbury Drive. Also, a 20-plus-year fire service professional, current fire chief in Sherburne. There are, there are extra benefits to the original plan proposed by the ALS committee that we can't lose sight of. Our overall public safety is enhanced by adding the additional cross-trained individuals. Our risk to our firefighters and the outcomes that we'll have on the all-hazards mitigating scenes is exponentially impacted in a positive way by having that third set of hands be in the fire department and cross-train, not just an EMS person. The other thing is, is it allows us to answer a second call with a all-hazards mitigating person in-house, as opposed to an EMS person who, if we do happen to have an emergency that is fire-based or one of the other many hazards that the fire department responds to, they're not going to be trained to handle that, and they're not going to respond. They're just going to sit there, but we're paying for it. If we're going to pay for it, I think we deserve the enhanced service and capability and overall better service to the community with those extra set of hands.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
Good evening. My name is Rick Fink. I live at 8 Donnelly Drive. I want to thank you, the ALS committee, for the hard work you put in toward the recommendation and the time that everybody's given to publicly inform us. After attending two public information meetings, I'm left wanting more from our fire department and the ALS committee. In short, I'm speaking to you tonight as an advocate for the taxpayers. The fire department was granted a budget override three years ago for the safety complex. While campaigning for this, we were told there would not be a need for more staffing for about 10 years. Now, here we are, looking to hire four more personnel. I suggested at a meeting that we work into a contract that staff train for ALS status. The ALS committee chair, Mr. Murby, noted that taking a draconian approach by cutting everyone and starting over isn't how we do business in Medfield. I can appreciate that answer. However, granting overrides to the fire department on the backs of the taxpayers shouldn't be how we do business in Medfield either. When I pressed for an answer as to why current personnel will not train up, one member of the fire department said, quote, "Because contractually, we don't have to." Interestingly enough, a new contract between the town and the fire department was signed while the last public information meeting was being held. That will expire, I believe, according to Mr. Markucci, today told me, June 30, 2020? Okay. So, in that time, we have, I think we can buy some time if we go with this amendment. I recommend we adopt amendment to this recommendation that supports private ALS service. This grant will, this will grant to the fire department, the ALS committee, and the taxpayers more time to get it right for Medfield while immediately implementing ALS service in the interim. So, I'm looking for more compromise and accountability from all parties. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Olson? Please.
Permission to respond to a couple of the questions?
Quickly, yes.
Is that appropriate?
Yes.
A couple of quick things to misread the question relative to the private ambulance services. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the town of Medfield had numerous, had numerous relationships with, I think, four or five private sector ALS services. And that didn't work out, okay? There must be a reason for that, okay? The other thing too, sir, recently relative to the station, I think when the proposition two-and-a-half question about the fire station, the public safety building was brought up, you did have a private service in place. And that answer, that question was answered quite honestly back then. You had a system in place, and it was working at that time. I, I wasn't here, but there was no need. There wasn't a misrepresentation, we're going to add people because you had a system in place. And I think the proponents of the public safety building looked at that system, what was in place at the time, and gave you a fair and honest answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Connor, Mr. Kaski, last word.
Just really quick to respond to that. I know on the last private company that left, I know Chief Hongs had left out that, that detail, but they had a contract with other towns as well, and they were supposed to be the first call. And other towns did not obligate that, so therefore, they had no choice but to leave the, the town. So, it wasn't the private company that left, it was the other towns that did not honor the contracts.
Okay, very good. So, I'm going to read the motion.
Point of information?
Yes.
Snarter, Dennis Mann, 37 Janes Ave. We are just commenting on the gentleman's motion to amend. Is that correct?
This is what we're going to be voting on, yes. On the motion, I'm going to read this motion to amend.
Okay, and then we'll have a comment period on the original warrant article?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, so, Article 16, motion to amend. Move that the town vote to appropriate $700,000, said some to be raised on the fiscal year 19 tax levy to provide advanced life support services for the town, including, as necessary, hiring of personnel, contracting for services, purchase of supplies, equipment and materials, certification, training, provided that the appropriate hereunder shall be subject to and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the town to exempt the amounts from the limitations on taxes imposed by Mass. General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c) in a vote on June 11th. So, we're voting on that amendment at the, at the appropriation level of $700,000? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
If you have a show of hands, please. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Okay, I'm going to deem that the, the amendment does not pass. Okay, so we're back to the original motion. Thank you. Comment on the original motion.
Yes, Dennis Mann, 37 Janes Ave. Going over the figures for our current fire department ambulance budget, and taking the number of taxpayers that I believe the board said last night was about 8,000, that comes to approximately .37 cents a day that the average taxpayer of the 8,000 taxpayers are paying for fire and EMS service in the community. As a former fire chief, I believe the town of Sharon, I mean, town of Medfield, excuse me, is underserved with firefighters, as well as paramedics. We have the opportunity to increase by 50% our fire department staffing levels at this time for an additional seven cents a day. So, you add those two together, or eight cents, I'm sorry, that's 45 cents a day. That's not even a package of gum. Remember, you have two firefighters on staff. If they go out on an EMS call, they can't provide ALS-level service. The opportunity for our firefighters to get to the paramedic level, as the previous gentleman stated, was 1,800 hours of training. That's a time and a half. That's what your firefighters will be getting because obviously, they're working beyond their normal tour duty. If they're not on their tour duty, and they're big, somebody else will be working that at time and a half. So, it's fiscally irresponsible to do that. I think through attrition, we'll be able to hire paramedics, as well as the four that we're talking here, and in a few years, add additional firefighters. Right now, Medfield has one firefighter for 1,500 residents, right? Where I came from, it was one for 670 residents, and to me, that wasn't acceptable. When I was chief, we had, when I first started, 13 years, we had no paramedics, nor would hospital was unavailable many times when we needed their services. So, I started embarking on hiring paramedics. I had a plan, one per year for the first four years. The board of selectmen was kind enough to give me, in the town meeting, four paramedics all at once, and then we were up and running. And then, through attrition, through retirements, we increased that. When I left 10 years later...
Could you just please finish up your comments? Could you just please finish up your comments?
When I left, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'll finish up. When I left 10 years later, they had 21 paramedics. The town of Medfield can do the same thing and it goes by very quickly and you'll get a full service and additional firefighters.
Can I just ask about the math? Just about the math. 47 cents a day, isn't that $180 a year?
That's correct.
And so what, what does that represent?
That represents the 8,000 taxpayers I heard last night. We have 8,000 taxpayers? Did I hear that comment?
We have 9,007 registered voters.
Oh, okay.
But I don't know how many households we have to pay taxes for.
I thought it was, I thought someone said 8,000 last.
4,400 households paid.
4,400. Well, I use 4,000 households, makes it a little more.
Okay, per household, that answers.
Per household. But it comes, it comes to a little more than that, all right?
Okay, thank you. Okay. We're going to limit these comments in the interest of the other six articles that we need to get through tonight. So if we could, just 30 seconds, if you feel you need to add anything to this debate, please do.
Lee Tredway, 14 Kenny Road. Perhaps I misunderstand, but I think the article, as it reads up there, should really be a vote on appropriating $400,000 to sync up with the staffing requirements that the chief outlined probably an hour ago. But this 250 may be the net effect if, in fact, there's an income of 150,000. But the fact is, what we're really doing is being asked to appropriate $400,000, not 250,000.
Mr. Murby?
We had, I had about a two-and-a-half-hour debate with the financial leaders of our town administration over this very issue. Let me tell you how I thought about it. We wanted you to know it was a $400,000 increase and 320,000 of that ultimately would wind up on the fire department budget. The reason that I pushed for the 250,000 override is the override is the increase in the tax levy that you all are going to pay taxes on. So if we put in a $400,000 override and then that, then the activity we're taking generates $150,000, what we've done is we've asked you to raise the tax levy limit 150,000 more than you really should have. I've been on the warrant committee long enough that there was an ulterior motive for me too, which is if the fire department says they can do it for this, I want to make sure they do do it for that. So the intention behind that was to basically not have the override be any bigger than it needed to be, given what the town would need.
Mr. Tredway?
I hear what you're saying, Gus. That just does not make sense to me. We see a chart for staffing that calls for $400,000, but we're being, we're voting on 250,000. I hear what you're saying, but to me, when all, when the dust settles, somebody's going to want to go out and hire, I think it was eight people for this $400,000. And as a taxpayer, I'm saying, wait a minute, no, we voted on 250,000, not 400,000. And let the override business take care of itself in the June 11 election.
So let me keep going. The 200, you can applaud for him, he's a good guy. The 250,000 override for this year, because we know we're in a transition, the modeling that we did as far as the actual cost that the fire department needed is we assumed that we would staff up, we didn't have any better idea in terms of exactly what would happen, but we assumed we'd be able to find four paramedics for an average of a half year each. So basically, what we were asking for was the funding to be able to pay for two full-time equivalent paramedics in FY 19. That 250,000 override is actually more than what the, what the fire department itself needs. It needs 160,000 of that 320,000 to pay for two paramedics, half of those four. So during this year, this gets to your issue, I think, laying around the allocation or the appropriation of the budget. The appropriation of the budget for this year is not the full 400,000. The appropriation of the budget this year is to cover four paramedics half-time, basically half of what the ultimate endpoint will be. Next year, if we are up and running with a PB waiver and we have four paramedics and we are operating that way, then the town is now starting to generate revenues. There's no, if the town or the ALS is generating revenues, then the town doesn't need to have another override because that added revenue suddenly raises the total cost against which the Prop. 2.5 limit will be raised. So there is no automatic assumption to be made that the other 150,000 of that 400,000 will need to be raised on an override. In fact, we believe that the revenues that come in will make that unnecessary. There will be, there will have to be a higher budget allocation in the out-years, but if the revenues coming in work the way this is projected to work and we have a high degree of confidence that that, that the numbers we're using are good, it won't be an override that would be needed to fund that addition to the budget.
Okay, I'm going to call a question after 15 seconds from the six people on the mic. Go ahead.
Hey, Jack Hunt, 71 Pleasant Street. Before I retired, I was a lieutenant in the Needham Police Department. I also worked as a EMT on the ambulance. You have adequate coverage in this town. I propose to not hire anyone. You should promote from within, train from within, will save you $400,000 a year, and it goes up every year. I'm on a pension. Thank you, Needham.
Okay, thank you.
Hi.
Quickly.
Caitlin Jankarelli, I don't have a study, but I do have a quick personal experience. My daughter, in the middle of the night, had her fourth febrile seizure. We had always just managed the previous ones at home, except this time she stopped breathing. And I frantically called 911 and was pretty appalled, as kind as everybody was. I was appalled to know that somebody walking in my door was not a paramedic. So I just want everybody to think long and hard on that. If you actually need the service, and it's not just children, it's cardiac arrest, it could be an accident on a soccer field, it's anaphylactic shock, are you willing to not have a paramedic come into town? And I think one quick thing that the, that people may not realize, that if we move to dismiss this, we are losing our support that we have from Westwood in Walpole as of July 1st. And that is...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Microphone number two.
Tom Brennan, 6 Nauset Street.
No more comments. No more.
I can't say that.
No, we're done. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Full disclosure, I'm not a native of Massachusetts, I'm from New York. They had a volunteer system down there. I'm formerly a volunteer fireman. Personally, I've done CPR 10 times without a paramedic. I managed to save one person, and that was only because we were right there when he had the heart attack and he stopped breathing and the heart stopped, the whole nine yards. We were very lucky. You do not get that lucky, okay? You need a medic. Push drugs, defibrillate, that whole bit. It's just something we need. We need paramedics.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
Ian Moore's. A year and a half ago, I had to call 911 myself when my husband collapsed right in front of me and was shaking from head to toe and holding onto his chest. I have to thank the firefighters and the police department that came. They were wonderful. As I followed the ambulance down 109, I was appalled and confused as to why we had to pull over. And that's when I saw the ALS people get into the ambulance. I'm lucky my husband's alive. We need to have our own in-house service.
Thank you. Mr. Kaski.
Stephen Kaski, just really quick, something that was overlooked. I know in our committee, we also asked for the equipment costs. None of this was given to us. We have no idea how much this is going to cost. We were told that we could possibly get grants. We need two machines on an ambulance. It could be $38 to $40,000 a machine, that's $80,000. Then we're going to equip a second ambulance to run two trucks for ALS in the near future or soon. That's another $80,000. And then we don't even know what else is, what else we need for equipment. And again, we've asked for this numerous times and we never received it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Microphone number one.
Again, Two Kingsbury Drive, Fire Chief Sherburne, Massachusetts resident here. I did just get to answer that question you just heard. It costs me $45,000 to get the necessary equipment for the Sherburne Fire Department to be ALS, even though we're not able to go there right now because of fiscal limitations. But we did get the equipment because I'm planning on going that direction as soon as possible. Just, just because he said that, I just wanted to answer that. The next thing is, we are, as a town, very, very fortunate. We have one of the lowest rates per capita that we pay for fire and EMS. I was researching this for my town meeting for Sherburne to justify the cost of apparatus replacement and things of that nature. We respond with far less than the national average, but we still get the same comfortable level of service as the towns around us in terms of our public classification rating, which I believe is a four or five, all right? But we're paying significantly less. That's something you think about when you're looking at this. You know, I know there's been, people said the budget's increased by 5% and this and that. You're still paying less than every community around you for the same level of protection and still will be, even if it goes up or you pay the 47 cents a day. And that's something to think about. It's the national standard that five people respond to an emergency medical call. We respond with two. You look at every community around us, Westwood's sending four or five, Walpole's sending four or five, all of them the same thing, we send two. And we do a good job with that, but having the extra set of hands, we're a little bit behind the ball here realistically. So it's something to think about. The enhanced service for both fire and EMS is well worth the investment.
Thank you, chief. Final comment.
Meredith Chamberlain, 10 Pleasant Street. I have a story like everyone else, but I'll skip that because everyone's tired of this topic. But I just want this visual. You have Dale Street, you have the police station, the fire station there, you have Park and Recs, and you have Memorial. And I don't know how many hundreds of allergies you have in those three buildings, but you're telling me one of those kids was in anaphylactic shock and instead of someone right there being there in two seconds, we're going to have to wait for another town? I'm not going to put a $250,000 price tag on any single one of these people in this room, and I suggest no one else do that either.
Thank you. Okay, we're ready for the vote. I'm not going to read the motion again. The motion is just exactly the same as the one I read, except the appropriation now is for 250,000. It continues to be subject to and contingent upon the affirmative vote on Proposition 2.5 that would take place on June 11. Everybody comfortable with what we're doing? Okay, we're voting on the original motion that was offered by the warrant committee. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
A show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. And thanks, everybody, for that. I know that was a long and extended dialogue, but it was an important topic, so I appreciate everybody's patience and I appreciate all the work that a lot of people have put into that topic. The next two topics that we're going to do, we're going to take 43 and 44 together. Article 43 is an article to vote to establish the Municipal Building Stabilization Fund and to appropriate funds for it. You can find that at page 73 in the warrant report. We have a, from warrant committee member Mike Pastore, do you have a positive motion?
Yes, I do, Scott. Move that the town establish a stabilization fund to be designated, quote, "the municipal buildings capital stabilization fund," end quote. The sole purpose of which shall be to fund new construction, capital repairs and improvements to municipal buildings and the structural and systemic components thereof. Quote, "capital repairs and improvements," end quote, being defined as construction projects otherwise eligible for bonding pursuant to GL Chapter 44, Section 7, for a minimum of five years as authorized by GL Chapter 40, Section 5b, and vote to appropriate $1 million to this fund, subject to voter approval of a dedicated override pursuant to GL Chapter 59, Section 21(c), Proposition 2.5 so-called, paragraph G.
More, please?
Yep. This article would create a permanent funding source for the creation and maintenance of town buildings. A one-time allocation of $1 million would be initially made to the fund. If the fund is established, all future allocations into the fund are voted on by the Board of Selectmen, after which town meeting must vote to allocate those monies out to fund specific projects. The warrant committee views this fund as a tool for the town to maintain its many public buildings and therefore recommends passage.
Okay, we have a short presentation here from Mike Quinlan. Michael, introduce yourself and you can, you can begin.
Thank you, Scott. Good evening. Mike Quinlan, 1 Stewart Street. I am the Chair of the Medfield Permanent Building Committee, and I promise to be brief. My brain is a little fried, I'm sure yours is too. So the crux of the problem that we're facing is, for years, the town has neglected its facilities and regular maintenance over long periods of time. The buildings were always run by the departments, and as you can expect, department heads aren't necessarily set up to really maintain and keep their buildings up to snuff. It's not their fault. Librarians don't go to school to learn how to maintain buildings. So what we wanted to talk to you about tonight is how we solve this problem. And the first solution we had was we hired a Director of Facilities, Jerry McCarty, who is here tonight. And Jerry, I want to thank Jerry because Jerry started off by, in his own free time, essentially, putting together this document here, which I won't go through in all slides, I promise. This is an evaluation of every single municipal facility that the town maintains, with the exception of the newest buildings, the Department of Public Works and the Public Safety Building. Obviously, those being relatively new buildings, they don't require a ton of maintenance and they're pretty good, pretty much good to go for a little while, but this is the, this was his first draft through all of the existing facilities. So to give you a little background, the town has 12 major municipal buildings, one wastewater treatment plant, maintains over 700,000 square feet of space, which have, has an insured value of approximately 106 million. Eight of those 12 buildings are over 50 years old. And I should note that this also does not include miscellaneous historic structures like the Peak House, et cetera, or Medfield State Hospital. That's a whole different issue which will be resolved in the future, hopefully. So part of this plan is Jerry's evaluation over 20 years of the systems, the buildings, the facade, windows, doors, roofing, everything that makes up the building itself, and it all has a useful life. These are not costs that are optional, these are costs that are coming, whether we like it or not. This is also a working document. This is something that will be continually updated, and as things change, whether it be potentially for a new school building, et cetera, the asset that we have in, say, Dale Street, which is on the agenda for tonight, we would change exactly what we might invest in that building depending on its future use. So this is a working estimate. I should note that these numbers, while a little scary and especially compared to that plus the OPEB issue, this is escalated to what we see as future inflation. So it's basically, a dollar today is not worth a dollar in 20 years. So it's basically escalated to what we project, a conservative amount for increase in construction costs and in materials, et cetera. So, but you can see, over the next five years alone, we're seeing systems and repairs that are north of $29 million. What we're here tonight to do is not to solve the entire problem, but just to start to address it. One thing to note, actually, I'll move this along. These are some of the projects that we've done, we've started to address since Jerry's come on board, and I want you to take a close look at these figures because it gives you a sense of the scale of what, what we as a town have invested our money into maintaining versus the numbers you saw on the previous slide. These are what we term immediate capital needs. These are urgent items that are significant, they're deficient in buildings, a large number of roofs are failing, and if anybody knows anything about buildings, the roof is probably the most important part as it keeps water out of the building, and water is the most destructive force when it comes to maintaining a building. So that gives you a sense of where we are, it gives you a sense of the problem. What we're asking for is to set up a debt, excuse me, a capital stabilization fund. What this does is this basically starts us with an allocation every year that goes towards just the maintenance of municipal facilities. That way, if budget constraints come on, and they come every, every year, this line item is dedicated just to that. It can't be, oh, we'll put that up for another year, another year, another year, which is how we've gotten to this problem in the past. But as a frame of reference, the Division of Capital Asset Management is the organization that this Commonwealth of Massachusetts, they operate all of the facilities that the Commonwealth owns. They project that a good... They project that a good number for a budget to maintain facilities is 2.5% of insured value. If we're estimating that our buildings have an estimated value of $106 million, right now, we're spending $400,000 a year on capital maintenance. That's 0.37%. If we approve this article, and we up that to $1 million a year, that gets us to 0.95%, which is still well below what the Commonwealth uses as a guideline. I just wanted to give you that as a frame of reference. This doesn't solve the whole problem. This is just the first step, but it's an important one. The benefit of doing this through a stabilization fund is it all becomes, it helps to eliminate the interest costs associated with borrowing funds, as say, an emergency arises, say, a boiler fails, and we then have to do a major boiler replacement on one of the schools. We no longer have to borrow those funds on an emergency basis, as interest payments, et cetera. So we're not just paying for the cost of the repair, we're paying for the interest payments on top of that. This allows us to smooth that out a little bit. That's not to say there won't be things where we have to come back to the town and say, we need new roofs, and it's more than $1 million, because that may happen, but at the very least, this helps to smooth out those payments. With that, I think Selectman Mark Cucci had some words as well.
Just very briefly on the financial piece of this. From an accountability standpoint, when we started looking at this, the assumption, I think, would be to fund this capital plan through sort of a series of debt exclusion votes over time. And if you look at the magnitude of it, we'd be coming back to the taxpayers on a fairly regular basis over the next 20 years. As Mike mentioned, we'd be exposed to the interest rate risk, we'd also be exposed to a problem with sort of hot lot numbers of repairs. The idea here is not to spend $1 million a year. The idea is the fund will accumulate, as needed, we will appropriate those funds. But if you have a $400,000 repair, it's hard for a town to borrow $400,000. Small bond issue, the fees are still pretty high, you know, if you borrow $40,000, the fees are similar, if you're borrowing $10 million. We also didn't want to appropriate too much, because we want to do this as prudently as possible. From a procedural standpoint, to spend this money, it's going to have to make it through the Facilities Director, then based on the bylaw we adopted last night, the Permanent Planning and Building Committee, who are expert in building issues, the Warrant Committee, the Selectmen, the Capital Budget Committee, the School Committee, and then a 2/3 vote account meeting. So procedurally, this is a very tough dollar to spend, and it should be, right? We don't want to create a slush fund here if somebody decides they want to pay their office a different couple. This is to address immediate needs. As to the timing, this year with the Dale Street project, the first spending from this fund would be for the Dale Street feasibility study. That's, if you look at the number that we have up there, that's a huge chunk of this, and likely, we'll be spending that money not to repair Dale Street, but to build, the new building, even to renovate it, depending on the outcome of the feasibility study. We use that first $1 million, if we get a reimbursement from the state, that reimbursement goes back into the stabilization fund, can be reused in the future. And this, as Mike goes, most importantly, this takes this off the table from the perpetual thing we hear that it's a bad year, right? We've gotten here, you know, we like to say, to tout the fact that we haven't had an override in seven years, and that's true, and we're certainly going to make up for it this year. But the reality is, the reason we didn't have overrides is because we underfunded the capital, right? We used to say we could do $550,000, and then as you get to the negotiation, well, it's 500, then it's 450, then you try to shave a little bit off that capital, and before you know it, you have numbers like this. And from a school building perspective, 80% of this is school buildings, the biggest buildings, the most traffic buildings. You know, we're in the MSBA state program right now. The last time we were in was 20 years ago. The likelihood of us getting another new school the next, before 20 more years, is unlikely. So we have to make these buildings last, we don't want to have to do these things on an emergency, last-minute basis. It's painful, it was very tempting to say, look, let's just do Dale Street versus Avon, it's cheaper in the short term, it's a bad year. But the reality is, if we don't fund it this year, the viability is still there, right? It's still going to be, the roof is still going to be there. Roof is not going to wait until we're ready to do this. And for these kind of permanent costs, the effect of the taxpayer is the same next year as it is this year, we just waited another year. So as unpleasant as it is, we think that we got to rip the Band-Aid off now, get it over with, and then start to address this issue, which has accumulated over the course of decades, and it will be solved over the course of decades.
Okay, any other comments in the voting? Come to the stage. Okay, questions or comments? Okay, number two vote. This is a vote to establish a municipal building stabilization fund and to appropriate the funds to it. Requires a 2/3s vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm going to deem that the motion carries by the required 2/3s vote. Number 44. Number 44 is a motion to appropriate funds and authorize borrowing for the Dale Street School Feasibility Study. Can find it on page 74 of the Warrant Report. Also requires a 2/3s vote, and Warrant Committee member Mike Pastore has a motion.
Move that the town appropriate $1 million to be expended under the direction of the School Building Committee, for the purpose of paying costs of the feasibility study to review potential solutions to the problems identified in the Dale Street Elementary School Statement of Interest, including but not limited to obtaining soil borings, topographical studies, land surveys, wetland surveys, preliminary site development plans, schematic designs, architectural and engineering designs, cost estimates, and construction alternatives, and any incidental or related services for the addition and/or renovation to or replacement of the Dale Street Elementary School located at 45 Adams Street, Medfield, Mass. 02052, for which feasibility study, the Town of Medfield, may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA. Set amounts to be expended under the direction of the School Building Committee, and to meet this appropriation, the town transfer $1 million from the Municipal Building Stabilization Fund, created under Article 43 of this 2018 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. Subject to said stabilization fund being funded, provided that the amount authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the Town of Medfield and the MSBA. The town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need, as determined by the MSBA, and any costs the town incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town.
Okay, that's the motion. Do you have a report?
This article would allocate funds from the stabilization fund we just created with
passage of Article 43, for a feasibility study to review potential solutions to either repair the current Dale Street Elementary School building, or construct a new building on the site to be determined. The verbiage of this article is mandated by the Massachusetts School Building Authority, which is a state granting authority that has approved the town for a state grant that will be covering roughly 40% of the overall project. The MSBA grant is contingent on completing certain prerequisites, which include such a feasibility study. Because the MSBA grant is contingent on providing this funding, the Warrant Committee recommends passage.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Marson?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and Mr. Pastore, sorry about that. MSBA requires us to have that motion written like that, so that's quite the long motion. I want to just thank you for the opportunity this evening to speak in front of you. The members of the School Building Committee are up there. That is also pretty prescriptive from MSBA. They require certain positions to be a part of that School Building Authority. You need to have members of Board of Selectmen, Town Administrators, Superintendent Schools, et cetera. Those are the folks that will be a part of that building, School Building Committee process. So we'll talk a little bit about how we got to this point tonight, what the MSBA process is, the feasibility study process, why is a new school needed, and next steps. So the Statement of Interest was submitted by the Town of Medfield and the Medfield Public Schools in 2012, 2016, and 2017. In 2016, we completely revised the 2012, and we added some additional features to it. In 2017, we revised it once more and added the plan that Mr. Quinlan had just showed you, that Jerry McCarty did. Certainly, we think that plan made a difference to MSBA. They came and conducted a site visit in August of this past year. So we knew we were getting close once they came to the site visit. They have never done that before. We took them to every nook and cranny of Dale Street, including the cellar, the basement, with all the wood, where all the wood is stored, and also the sandy floors. They got to see everything. We were accepted by MSBA into their program in December 2017, so we had to go into Boston to their meeting, and we were only one of 16 schools that were selected that day out of 84 SOIs. This gives you a sense of the timeline for Dale Street School. It opened 1941, so we're looking at, you know, usually town buildings are built for 50 years. We're on year 77 for Dale Street. First addition happened in 1962, second addition in 96. And this is a really important data point here. The first Dale Street study to look at developing a new school was in 2008. So this is something new that we just came up with. This is a 10-year project we've been looking at as a town. First SOI, as we said, in 2012, second in 2016, third in 2017, and then we were just accepted into the eligibility period. So the MSBA is fairly new, it was, it's probably about 10 years old now. It's the old SBA. So when you folks did the new, the high school and the middle school over many years ago, that was the SBA. Now we have the MSBA. So right now, the reimbursement cost for Medfield, 38.84%. Sometimes I say 39%, but Mike Sullivan always corrects me and tells me that it's 38.84%. So that means that if we pass this this evening, the town will get a reimbursement of $388,000. Now looking at the process, just to give you a timeline and what this is going to look like. So the eligibility period right now is April 2018 to the end of December. So we have until December to get the funds allocated, and then we start to form the project team in October, and then into January of 2019. Mike?
So what you can see here, this is actually right off of the MSBA's website, which is very informative if you're looking for more information. We won't get into that level of detail tonight. But essentially, everything noted in blue is for school districts, and the green is really construction professionals. And that's why the School Building Committee is made up of both building committee folks, as well as the town administration, school administration, Warrant Committee, et cetera. So that's really part of the forming the project team. That's where we start to hybrid those different constituencies together. The eligibility period in forming the project team is the place where we are now. There is no guarantee that we get to the next step, but that's why we're here tonight. One of those steps in order to get to the feasibility study is appropriating the necessary funds. When we get into feasibility study, what we're really going to start off with is hiring, what's called an owner's project manager to represent the town, architects, designers, et cetera. And then we're going to do a full feasibility study. That'll look at four main options: repair the building, renovate, and renovate the building and add to the building, and then, sorry, three options: repair, renovate, renovate slash add, and a new building. Those are the main options that we'll look at, and then if it's determined that the existing building doesn't support the educational needs, and a new building is necessary, then we start looking at site evaluation, we start looking at all sorts of options in terms of where that would go. And then that gets us also into partially schematic design, which would get us to an approximate point where we figure we can get solid numbers for what the building would cost. Then we go back for another vote. We would come back to the town, that would, with hard numbers on what the project would cost, and we would put it in front of you. During this stage, we're really just looking at allocating the money to get to the next stage. That next stage of feasibility and schematic design is really where we get a lot of public input, and that's where we're going to have all sorts of visioning sessions and invite the community in to talk about what the community desires from this project. Subsequent to that, the funding the project would be, looks like about the year 2020, towards the third quarter. And then if that gets approved, we would then go through construction documents and get the project completed on the design side, and then if the funding is approved, we move into construction, which estimates that we would, if everything goes smoothly, would open a new facility or in addition to the facility around the start of the school year in 2023. It's important to note this timeline, because a lot of this that factors into this, this is going to be a big ask, there's no doubt about that. But I want you to note the timeline, because the last time the town did major school projects, with the three school projects of the middle school, high school, and Memorial, was around the turn of the millennium. It started in the late 90s and wrapped up around 2004. A lot of the debt that the town took on in order to fund those projects start to come off the books, right? They're borrowed usually on a 20-year process, excuse me, on a 20-year bond. So starting around 2021, 22, some of that debt capacity starts to come back to the town. So it's not as if this is going to be all-new borrowing and all-new funding. There's going to be some balance off of some existing funding and payments, interest payments that will come off to help offset that. So I wanted to make sure we were clear on that.
So looking at some of the reasons why a new school was needed. Our building certainly has limitations. Classroom sizes do not meet the MSBA standards. Certainly, I'll show you some pictures as we go through, but classrooms are a lot smaller than they should be. If you go into Memorial, see nice, big, spacious classrooms for elementary kids. You don't see that in the Dale Street, smaller, cluttered classrooms. Our class size increased. We're starting to see an increase in our enrollment in the lower grades. We've had 104 kids move in, as I said last night, over the summer, new to Medfield. Many of those kids were in the elementary levels, so we've seen class sizes rise up to 24, 25 in some of our younger elementaries. And then we have numerous concerns with American Disabilities Act, our ADA compliance in our school. We'll see some pictures a little bit later, but it's not compliant, it's not made for 2018. Certainly, the ADA has changed over the years, and it's not accessible for all of our students and for folks that visit as well. Gives you a sense of what the current classroom space looks like? Go through these quickly. The picture in the middle is something that's important to note. So, you know, music is a big part of our culture here in Medfield, and lessons begin at the Dale Street level in 4th grade, and what you see when you go in the Dale Street during the day is most of our lessons and practices are happening in the hallways or the vestibule in the main building. We don't have a dedicated space for music lessons, that's a problem for us. Some of the general space, you see the nurse's office, really undersized, teacher's room, and one of the bathrooms. This is an interesting one. So we have lots of storage issues at Dale Street. That first picture that you see, that's what the teachers go to to get their papers printed. They have to go into that storage closet, it's a network printer, so they have to navigate their way around that. Certainly, the storage in the middle isn't great, and then, as I said, music is important to us, and we have no place to store the instruments, so we have to put those in the hallways. And if you go there on a Monday or Tuesday, when there's ensemble practice, it's really crowded in that hallway. So here's a sense of what our enrollment looks like. So we have, every couple of years, we have NESDEC, who does enrollment projections for over 400 school districts in New England. They did the last one in 2017, 2018, and if you see right now, the 2018 numbers were already above what the projections were. So every year when NESDEC, every couple of years when they do this, they tell us there are three communities that always have large student ratios, where families are moving into because they're moving into the schools. Hoppington, Medfield, and Sudbury are always the three communities. So this isn't, doesn't take in consideration any of the new development, whether it's Hospital Hill, or any of the 40Bs that we're talking about by Dale Street. So that's just, they use a live birth cohort model, so that's based on folks that are here, or people that have moved in. But you'll see that in 2027, we're right back up to, projected up to, right around 3,000 students again. Another picture of the storage on the left, and you'll see those, the hallway in the far right, you know, that, if you've ever been in Dale Street recently, you'll see how small those lockers are. Elementary schools have cubbies now, where kids put their materials and put their coats. This was built in 41 as a high school, so it's set up like a high school, and it's probably the most narrow locker I've ever seen in my entire life. On a recent tour, someone mentioned, they must have done that in the 40s so no one could stuff someone in the locker. I don't know. I don't know why they did it, but they're pretty narrow. Here's some of our ADA issues. You'll see they're not, no longer compliant. The picture in the middle is a lift, so there's no access to the second floor. That lift just gets you up to the second level, but the actual second floor, there's no access to that in our school.
It's interesting to note that the American with Disabilities Act is not just for people with handicap. We have- We have a lot of children that play sports, injure their ankles, legs. When that happens, it makes it very difficult on the school to be able to respond because they can't get some of those kids up to some of those upper levels. So it's not just for wheelchair-bound children. I just want to make sure we're clear on that. Some of the major systems that are failing right now and will continue to fail mainly are HVAC, heating ventilation, air conditioning, control valves and how we control those systems.
Michael, I think we could stipulate that we have an old and antiquated building at Dale Street, right? I think there's no one that disagrees with that, right? So.
No problem. So just flip it through, you can see the problem.
It's very old.
And, but we do want to do one more slide if you can bear with me. Next steps. We will vote the article tonight. If it's approved tonight, there is a town election override vote for June 11th and visioning sessions would start in the fall. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Okay, questions or comments at microphone number one or two? Microphone number one.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Round two. It's been a good one. My name's Randy, Randy Dicinger, 43 Park Street. And for the last 26 years that I can remember, that's all I've been hearing about is Medfield schools. Thrilled, I now have them in there. My kindergartner is reading to me at night. It's awesome. But why do we have five schools? And from the slide presentation beforehand, are any of them ADA compliant? Is this one?
I don't know, to be honest. I can't respond to that question, but it's a lot closer than Dale Street. I'll tell you that much.
I know we want to start with Dale Street, but here's my thought. A lot of hot topics tonight and tomorrow night. I mean, tonight and last night.
Maybe skewer.
All right, all right, all right. Let me get going here. Let me get going. All right, we have the state hospital land. We're looking for things for revenue for the town. I say, let's do the smart thing and think about putting schools one at a time up there. Taking this old schools, we can do housing with them, we can make some money that way, but let's start with fresh schools on one thing. So we're not driving around all over town. Why are schools all over town? Because that's the way Medfield started, 1940, 1910, whatever it was. I think the smart thing to do is to not do anything until we can come up with a million-dollar plan to bring them up to the school, to bring them up to the hospital.
Good.
Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments? Any other comments, questions? Okay, if there are none, we're going to put this to a vote. This is a motion read by Mr. Pastore. Appropriate funds and authorize borrowing for the Dale Street School feasibility study, excuse me, to transfer into the new stabilization fund. Thank you. Does require a two-thirds vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I deem that the motion carries by the required two-thirds. Just a quick shout out. On the soundboard is Chris Allen. Chris has been doing this for a lifetime. He received the lifetime volunteer of the year award from the Medfield Foundation this year, and I thank him for this. I really appreciate him here every year. We have number 12. We're going to go to our capital budgets. You can find our capital budgets on page 48 of the warrant report. And warrant committee member Barbara Gibbs has a motion.
Move that the town appropriate $1,183,000 for capital expenditures as printed in the warrant report under fiscal year 19 capital budget recommendations under the recommend column, and that the board of selectmen be authorized to sell or trade town-owned equipment and/or property as set out in the warrant report, the proceeds of which will be applied to fiscal year 19 capital budget procurements, and that to meet said appropriation of $394,491 to be raised on the tax levy. $701,116 will be transferred from other funds as set out in the warrant report, and $87,393 will be transferred from unexpendited appropriation funds as set out in the warrant report.
Okay. In the report, please.
I'm sorry? Do you want me to read the, please? Do you want me to read the items?
Yeah, if you can just read the items.
Yeah. So the article appropriates $1,183,000 for capital budgets and authorizes the board of selectmen to sell off or trade town-owned property. The net request for the town ought to be raised on the tax levy is $394,491.
Okay, that's perfect.
The article, the capital budget committee is recommending the money be spent on the following items. $345,000 for fire alarm replacement at Blake's, at Middle School. $100,000 for the high school canopy roof repair. In case you're worried about using the elevator at the library, because we did not recommend it, it will be funded out of money that the library already has. So you can still take the elevator at the library. $12,500 for portable radio replacement for the fire department. $5,000 for the conservation committee. $44,000 for cruiser replacement for the police department. $42,000 for a truck for the highway department. $162,000 for bombardier truck for the highway department as well. $137,000 for a John Deere tractor for the highway, and $50,000 to resurface subdivisions for the highway. $75,000 to replace two primary sludge pumps for the sewer department. $40,000 for a SCADA system upgrade for the sewer department. $40,000 for a SCADA system upgrade for the water department. For park and rec, $40,000 for a new passenger van, and an update of the dock system at Hinckley for $90,500, to a total of $394,491 to be raised on the tax levy. The warrant committee recommends passage.
That's our motion on the capital budgets. Questions or comments?
Just one small question, Renee Howley, Harding Street. The fire alarm replacement and the roof repair were also on the building stabilization fund slides. And now they're in the capital budget? So I'm just, are we going one path or the other?
That was on the identified need. The money for the building stabilization fund in the first year is going to the Dale Street feasibility study. And so this is part of the overall plan, but it's not funded out of the stabilization fund. So we're not paying for it twice.
But long-term, do we have a plan? Are we going to be going one or the other? Or are we always going to have this back and forth?
Well, going forward, there's going to be a five-year capital budgeting process to identify what we're going to spend money on and where it's going to come from. And so we're going to try to do it within those windows in the way that is most effective and efficient for the town. The stabilization fund is dedicated to building repairs, and that will be a significant source of funds for specifically building repairs. If there's available funds in other years to come from other sources, just like we use grant sources, we use other sources of revenue, we'll try to use those as well.
Okay. It just would be good if we could minimize confusion in having the same topics in two different articles.
Right. This is for this year's appropriation. Yeah.
Any questions or comments? If there are none, we'll put our capital budget motion to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I deem that the motion carries. Next article is Article 14. This is an article to appropriate funds for the owner's project manager and the architect for park and recreation facility. Can find it on page 51 of the warrant report. And we have a positive motion from warrant committee member Abby Marble.
We move that the town appropriate $150,000, said sum to be raised on the fiscal year 19 tax levy, to hire an owner's project manager and an architect or other design professional to prepare a feasibility study, including site evaluation, program development, traffic and utility study, and preliminary cost estimate for a park and recreation facility. Said appropriation be subject to voter's approval of a capital exclusion override pursuant to GL Chapter 59, Section 51, I'm sorry, 21(c), so-called Proposition 2 1/2, Paragraph I, 1/2.
Thank you. In the report, please.
All right. Last year, town meeting appropriated $60,000 to fund a programmatic need study for the park and recreation department. This year, the park and recreation commission is seeking funds to pay for a feasibility study meant to locate the best site for a new facility. This study will also include program development, a traffic, I just said this, a traffic and utility study and preliminary cost estimating. Setting a study in motion now will continue the process but not lock the town into a specific construction timeline. The park and recre- recreation commissioners say their ultimate goal is to deliver excellent programming to Medfield residents of all ages, not just the young. The size and the condition of the 89-year-old FAFF center stifle any thoughts of enhanced programming going forward on that site, they assert, in asking for a new facility. The majority of the warrant committee recommends passage.
Thank you. And we have a minority report from warrant committee member Jack Wolfe.
The full warrant committee recognizes the value of Medfield Park and Recs. They do a terrific job here in the town in serving our children and serving some of our adult population. So there is no question that at some point in time, we definitely need a new building. The FAFF building is unacceptable. But there is a question about when. There are two options today for location for NPR's new building. One option is up on Medfield State Hospital property. And we have recently seen, the warrant committee has seen for the first time this spring, a set of financials from the Medfield State Hospital Master Planning Committee. Those financials lead to significant questions about what should be built up there and when. And the Medfield Park and Rec building is dependent upon the infrastructure that is present in the Medfield State Hospital area in order to make economical building. The total infrastructure would serve both the buildings up there and a potential Medfield Park and Rec facility. So there is a question about the timing of that. The second option is at the Dale Street site. You just saw Superintendent Marsden put up a slide that said, "That's likely to be ready in August of 2023." That's quite a bit down the road. So let me suggest that, given the massive load on town finances this year, $2 million increase in the school budget, $1 million for the Dale Street feasibility study, $250,000 for ALS, $150,000 for master planning, that if we can hold $150,000 for a year or so, it may be a wise thing to do. One thing I would ask you to think about is to think about preserving the socioeconomic strata that we have here in the town today. 23% of our town have family incomes below $75,000. 23% of the town. We need to ensure that those folks are equally as well-served by our tax rate as are others in the town. So let me suggest that I think this is a year in which we can delay the Medfield Park and Rec building and be helpful in holding the tax rate down to the degree possible.
Questions or comments?
Mel Sebo, Park and Recreation Commission. The Parks and Recreation Department mission statement is to supply affordable recreation opportunities for the residents of Medfield. Unfortunately, we're not doing that now. We haven't been doing it for decades. We heard Jerry Potts here last night talk about stress that students are under. One of the great ways to alleviate stress are through exercise, recreational activities. We have no programming for high school students because of our lack of facility space. We have one program for grades seven through eight, and that's a mid, a middle school ski trip. We have a limited program for adults and virtually nothing for seniors. We heard the town administrator last night refer to the FAFF center as a dump. The commission actually, Mike, feels that you were too kind. We will stipulate also that it's an old and dilapidated building. The, the, anyone who's been in the FAFF center doesn't really need a, engraved in your mind walking through there. And don't go in the basement. The commission's main concern is health and safety of people in that building. It's one thing, yeah, we don't have the space, we need more space. I think there's a consensus that says we need a new building. However, from a health and safety standpoint, I have a, I have a report given to the selectmen in 2008. It's from the, excuse me. It's a findings and recommendations from the Medfield Capital Planning and Finance Committee. I believe this committee was the precursor of the permanent building committee today. Tim and Bonfati and Tom Irk can tell me if that's correct. Basically, their findings, they concur with a study that was done six years prior in 2002 that said there are significant issues with the site and the structure at the FAFF Center. And those issues are hazardous materials in the building, including asbestos, PCBs, and lead. Significant noncompliance with handicap accessibility, lack of a fire sprinkler system, plumbing fixtures in need of replacement due to age and code requirements and efficiency, and limited parking, traffic, and circulation problems. Their, their conclusions were that, of course, that Medfield Park and Recreation provides important developmental programs to the citizens and that the space is inadequate. They also say that rehabbing the FAFF Center would not be cost-effective and would be basically a waste of resources, town resources. So with that said, we would ask, this is, we're going about this in a phasing, three phases. The initial phase is to site it. Would like a disinterested third party to tell us where the best site is for this facility to be located. This is very similar to the process and the approach that was taken with the Public Safety Building in their quest to build a building. It would be three steps. The first, a site feasibility study. The next would be a design construction, and then finally building funds. So I think we've been putting off this issue for years now in this town. It's, it's every bit as important as educating our students in this town, providing these type of opportunities. There's a reason our teenagers for decades have called this town Deadfield. Okay? If you want to see the teen center during the weekends, go down to the Papagino's parking lot or one of the playground parking lots. You see where the kids congregate to basically make plans to go off. Same thing in the summertime. We need to be addressing the needs for all Medfield residents. That's not being done. So we would ask that we move this motion and start us off in this first phase, long overdue, and we appreciate your time and the concern of our, of our constituents who have done quite a bit of work for us, and also the work that, that members of the warrant committee have done. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you, and to the commission as well. Thank you very much. Microphone number two.
Rod Tetro, 12 West Street, Park and Rec Commissioner. I just want to just address a couple of things. You know, I was listening to the selectman meeting last week, and you know, Mr. Michael Markucci says often, you know, there's no good year for this. And, you know, I've lived in town now for 15 years. When, when we first moved here, our kids were two and three years old, and we had a great time in the swim pond. But they soon outcrewed that swim pond, and the park and rec facility did not accommodate our needs as soon as they got to Dale Street and beyond. One of the things that Jack Wolfe mentioned in his dissenting report is that we are, have residents here in Medfield with limited financial ability. And our job as a community is to educate everybody, and that's through our public schools and through our public park and recreation facilities. And we are not in the business of privatizing this so that it's not acceptable and not accessible for students and adults and teenagers who can't afford it. We are one of the only programs that can provide programming and needs for all residents of our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
Laurel Scotty, 10 Green Street. We've all known that this year is the year we have to bite the bullet. And $150,000 isn't peanut change, but compared to what other expenses are... And $150,000 isn't peanut change, but compared to what other expenses are, Parks and Recs deserves the money. And to suggest that we take them out of one dump and put them into Dale Street, which they're calling a dump, doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever. So a new building's needed.
Thank you. Microphone number two, please.
Hi, Kelly Wysocki, Derby Lane. I just have a question, and maybe I'm missing something here, but two articles ago, we voted on the million-dollar fund. Then we voted on the feasibility study for Dale Street, which is supposed to be $1 million, but we could get $384,000 back from MSB. Why couldn't we use that $384,000 for this $150,000?
My understanding is it takes about five years to get it back, so if you want to wait, you could do it. We're still waiting for the boiler reimbursement on the Wee La School boiler, which was finished about two years ago.
Meredith Chamberlain, 10 Pleasant Street. So according to page 45, the total operating budget recommended by the Warrant Committee is $62,859,653. Is that correct? That's what's in here, or around that figure, right? So if you're talking about saving $150,000, if you do the math and you use that number, it is 2,000th of 1%. So I really don't think actually moving Park and Rec forwards $150,000 is really what's hitting our tax dollars.
Okay, final comments. Microphone number two.
Hi, Jennifer Hearn, Hawthorne Drive. I just want to point out that a rec center is not just good for kids, it is good for everyone. It's good for adults. I'd like my husband to be able to meet people and play basketball. You know, it's good for seniors. They offer amazing programs. And one thing I think is really important to consider, if you're going to talk about dollars and cents, is to think about what in town can make money. The rec center, if we have a new rec center, it can generate potentially a lot of money. And also, we're allowed to rent it out to other towns and facilities and parties and things of that sort. So, you know, it's just a thought to... I'm not sure. At one meeting, how much was it that you guys had projected you could potentially make? Wasn't there a number, Kevin? Was it a couple million? Am I wrong? Could be wrong.
Kevin Ryder, Director of Park and Rec. We feel that a new rec center conservatively could generate about $1.7 million. Conservatively. And that we just finished the last fiscal year with the FAF Center as our source of revenue. We generated $717,000. That is roughly 70% increase since 2012. And we have also increased participation in our program since 2013 by almost 90%. And our summer camps have increased in just the last two years, thanks in large part to Dr. Marsden and the school committee, 80%. So, I mean, we are servicing a large number of people, and this $150,000 would just start the path towards what we feel is a much-needed utility for Medfield.
Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
Tom Tate, 3 White Street. There was a note in the booklet here that said, "Last year, town meeting appropriated $60,000 to fund a study for Parks and Rec. Did we spend that? Did that get spent?"
The $60,000 that was appropriated last year was not from the tax levy. It was actually expended from our revolving account. So we spent that money out of our revolving account. We felt that the need for the program study was that important that we offered to pay for that first step ourselves. That was completed earlier, back in the fall. The total cost came in at about $56,000. And their recommendation, it was a firm out of Chicago, and their recommendation was, as you might imagine, that the FAF Center is not good and that a new recreation facility should be built in the town.
Thanks. I guess the numbers are kind of boggling to me because I'm old, but am I the only one that thinks $150,000 is a lot of money? I mean, I agree that the FAF Center needs replacement, absolutely, especially for some, for a group that can generate revenue. I think that's terrific, all right? But $150,000 to go tell us it's an old building? I mean, guys, come on.
So to be clear...
I guess I don't know what the money's gonna do.
The $150,000 is going to tell us that that's an old building. I can do that for free right now.
Right.
Building was built in 1929.
It's old.
Every time it gets rain, we get water inside. Mr. Quinlan had talked about water being one of the worst things for a building. I can show you that evidence tomorrow morning if you want to come down to the FAF Center. The $150,000 will get us a proper site in town. It will also eliminate a number of sites in town that people have opinions about that could be potential for a Park and Rec facility. This $150,000 would do traffic survey, will do utility surveys. It will tell us the exact proper site and also give us a preliminary cost estimate for that building. So we can come with you with hard numbers and not say, "Maybe it's going to be $8 million. Maybe it's going to be $12 million." This will give us a path towards the exact cost so that you guys have the exact information needed to go forward.
Of course, as Jack said, we may discover that that site is up on hospital property, too.
That would be one of the sites that would be like that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Kevin, stay right there. Okay, final three comments, final four comments. Please keep them brief.
Hi, I'm Eugenia. I'm 17 Trailside Road. I'm just, I just want to say that both my kids, they don't do anything in Medfield because there's nothing in Medfield to do. Like, my kids go on Walpole, they go to Millies, and that's money that I could be very happy to spend with you, and I'm always there trying to see if we can have programs. And the answer is always, "We don't have time, we don't have space, we don't have money." So I think it's time for us to invest in that. That's all.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
Tom Gregliano, former Park and Rec Commissioner. It was my initiative with Heidi Opal, and we went to Joanne Sprague years ago, if you remember, on this town floor. And we got the hospital property, the sliding hill. We were about, it was in committee, came out of committee, had a bill number, and guess what happened? They closed the hospital, took it away. We got it back. Back then, we also had the school and the senior expansion the same year. By three votes, we missed out on a field house that the Park and Rec... Kevin was here with us, and we quantified it. And he's quantified it again tonight. We quantified that. We would raise almost as much for free cash as well as paying the bonds. And we're going to put up a building that would make the fork kicks look like a closet. We had promises in writing, and we would have raised almost $500,000 free cash annually every year and all the expenses made. We're even better suited now to do it even better. The kids running the gym in the high school, they run in the basement. We don't even have a facility for the high school. That's a shame. We built that senior center that year for $387 a square foot, and we did the site preparation. We were going to do it for $130 a foot. So think about what we can do. You talked about Lot 3. I was on the EDC way back when, when we were working with facility, and we got that property. That Lot 3 out there on Ice House Road. Well, we had a facility that could really make this town do very well financially. So think about doing that. And then also, we would be addressing all the ages with something like that, which we need, and that's what the National Park and Recreation Association recommends, that all ages and all families, because families have a full-time job, and it's rewarding, and you do it with your kids. So let's think about doing it. And thanks to the Park and Rec, they do a great job.
Thank you, Tom.
Justin Ziegler, Weinberg Road. I don't, I'd be hard-pressed to imagine anyone's against a new Park and Rec building at all. I mean, I feel like I run out of my driveway half the time as it is. But the question I have is that we're appropriating $150,000, and yet there's some unknown numbers associated with Hospital Hill, and yet that's one of the sites where presumably an architect and an OPM might be looking at. If we appropriate this $150 now, and then the numbers come out and look a little ugly or look counter to what the assumptions are of this initial study, have we spent that $150 for nothing if that all is in this moot? Especially in a tight year like this year.
So when we talk about the state hospital property as a potential site for a Park and Rec facility, we are not talking about the main campus with the buildings and everything. Talking about across the street, south side of Hospital Road. I always tell people when I talk about it, where the sledding hill is, but we're not taking away the sledding hill. We look at it, if that is the site, and this is by no means what we're saying is the site, as a gateway to the fields at McCarthy Park that we also maintain, kind of making it a go-to place for recreation in Medfield, where we are already up there with our fields, we can be there with our camps, and we can make better use of those fields throughout the year. So it's not about going to the state hospital or anything that the state hospital committee is doing. This would be across the street from the main campus.
And just to clarify, if something comes out in these numbers that are maybe made public, I guess, in the future, that renders anything, if there's nothing that would happen in that would render this study moot? I mean, I'm wondering what the cost is of delaying for a year, not because I don't want it, but because I'm wondering what the problem is.
The cost of a delay? Well, we've been delayed for about 20-plus years, so every year it's been another year. The cost could be that, Mike Quinlan showed a slide about what Jerry McCarty had said in his 20-year plan. In that 20-year plan, in the initial phase, there's almost $2 million of repairs needed to FAF Center. That just is to repair. That doesn't add space, that doesn't give us a gymnasium. That is just $2 million in repairs that needs to be done just to make us up to code. So what are we doing if we delay this another year? Next snowstorm we get in December or January, I might not have a roof. And that's what the delay could do.
Thank you. Mary, final comment.
Mary Garnett, 123 Granite Street. I think that the Park and Rec absolutely deserves a new building. I do want to say, though, that, and it showed last night, many of the town's people are still in favor of a privately-owned sports facility. And I have seven youngsters in my family that are running around constantly to places outside of town for all of their sports events, fork kicks, or whatever. I think that people are still interested, and I do think that it was evidenced last evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see if we could do both somehow.
Okay, we're ready to advance the motion. The motion is to appropriate $150,000 for the owner's project management and architect for Park and Recreation Facility. This, like all of these articles, is going to be contingent upon, subject to?
Yeah, I'd like to comment.
You want to comment?
Yeah. It wouldn't be a deliberative night unless somebody played devil's advocate on a couple of issues. I'd like to make a couple of comments, not to really change your mind, but to just ask you to think about a couple of things. The Selectmen voted 2 to 1 against this article, not because we're against the Park and Rec facility, but I, at least in my case, I had some serious questions about timing. If you've been keeping score, we're closing in on consideration of $3 million in override dollars this coming year. That will represent something bordering on a 10% increase in your taxes. So the first thing I would like you to think about, the comment about $150,000 not being that much against the big budget is fair, but another $150,000 on a $3 million potential total override is kind of significant. As long as you're aware of that and you're okay with it, then that's good. The other thing I'd ask you to think about is this study is taking a look at where this facility should be positioned. In my view, that's a strategic question, not grounded on technical analysis of particular sites. It's actually a decision that ought to be figured out by a townwide master planning effort. And so if we're going to go down this path, you have to ask yourself, and then when you get the answer, is that the end of it? Is that the answer? Now we know where the Parks and Rec facility is going? Or are we going to then have a follow-on question that says, "Let's go back and take a look and see if the master planning committee or whoever it is agrees with it?" The third point to consider is if this project moves forward at this particular point in time, consider when the financing for the major construction of this project will fall. And come to your own conclusions of where that maps on to where the financing for the Dale Street School will fall, and ask yourself if you're prepared for that kind of a spike in funding. If you can get past all those and you say, "This is an important facility," which it is, and if you're satisfied, you've answered yourself on all three of those questions and you're okay with it, then vote. But I at least think you ought to hear why this might not be the best year for this. And I kind of apologize to the Parks and Rec folks for doing this. They knew where I stood, but they've been working hard for a long time. So this is not an issue of what they're trying to do, and it's not an issue of the value. I'm just suggesting you should think about those three things.
Okay, thank you. Briefly. Jack? You'll get it.
Thank you. The first clarifying point is that the Million Seven is revenues. There are expenses against that. If you look at the projected income statement, they will generate in the out years somewhere in the neighborhood of $400,000 to $500,000 a year. That will be the contribution to the town. It is substantial, but it is not at the Million Seven range. The second piece is relative to the Dale Street School. There is no thought of using the Dale Street School as the Park and Rec facility. The thought is that that site will be used. There may be a small portion of the Dale Street School that could be used and would be appropriate, but there is no thought of using the Dale Street School, anything close to the way it is, as a Park and Rec facility.
Thank you. Briefly.
I'm sorry, I'll try to re-brief. The Park and Rec Commission has been involved in this process for quite a while. We've been working closely with Permanent Building Committee on this, and we were actually dexter in line on this until the Dale Street School unexpectedly got accepted into the MSBA. I'm a public school teacher at the town in Needham. I've been on the Public Building Committee for the new Hillside School, which is being built on the site of the Owens Poultry Farm. I'm sure some of you drive by it. I've been on that committee now for five years. That school's slated to be opened in two years for a total of seven years. It took seven years to build our new Hillside. And in talking with Permanent Building Committee, that Dale Street School is also projected to be about seven years out. We feel that, as a town, that we can build, if need be, both of these facilities at the same time because of what Mr. Quinlan was saying in his statements about Dale Street School, about these public infrastructure projects like the high school, the middle school, and memorial school coming off our books.
Thank you. No, we're done. We're going to move the motion. I already started it. We're going to move that the town appropriate $150,000, said some to be raised on the fiscal year '19 tax levy, to hire an owner's project manager and an architect or other design professional to prepare a feasibility study, including a site evaluation, program development, traffic and utility study, and a preliminary cost estimate for a Park and Recreation Facility. Said appropriation be subject to voter's approval of a capital exclusion override pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c). Again, the so-called Proposition Two and a Half override. All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Could I have a show of hands, please? All in favor, please raise your hands. Opposed? Motion carries. Article 18 is to appropriate matching funds for a study of incorporating cultural uses into the former state hospital redevelopment. We do not have a positive motion from the Warrant Committee. Do we have a positive motion?
How we do?
We have a positive motion from the Selectmen.
We move that the town appropriate $25,000, and to meet said appropriation, appropriate $25,000, transfer $25,000 from free cash to provide matching funds for a grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or other sources, the purpose of which is to create architectural and engineering plans incorporating cultural uses into the redevelopment of the former state hospital site.
Okay. Do we have a report from the Warrant Committee?
Yes. We move that the Article 18 be dismissed.
Okay, and a report?
Sure. This article is seeking appropriation of $25,000 from the town to provide half of the matching funds from a $50,000 grant from the Commonwealth that has not yet been approved. The Cultural Alliance of Medfield says it will try to raise another $50,000 from private sources to assist with this project. If the Commonwealth's grant comes through, the funds procured through the cultural arts matching grant will be used to create architectural and engineering plans for cultural uses of the lead chapel and infirmary at the state hospital site. The Medfield State Hospital... The Medfield State Hospital Master Planning Committee is in the process of completing a master plan for the hospital land that will include preferred uses on the property. The master plan has not yet been reviewed and approved by the town. Given that, the warrant committee believes that allocating funds to a particular use at the hospital at this point is premature, especially during a year when the town is facing several overrides. The warrant committee believes that any action on this article would be more appropriate once the master plan has been approved. The warrant committee recommends dismissal of this article.
Okay. Thank you. Questions or comments?
Can I speak briefly on this?
Please do.
Just briefly from the selectmen's perspective, and this is $25,000 to advance an effort by private citizens essentially to privately renovate the Lee Chapel for cultural uses in almost every version of redevelopment plans for the hospital. If one building is going to be saved at the hospital, it's the Lee Chapel. Jean Minio can speak more about the timing of the upcoming grants. I think Gus described this at our meeting a couple of weeks ago. This is sort of placing a very small bet on the possibility of a large payoff. I mean, the long-term plan here is for private funding and renovation for this, and if that can be accomplished with a little bit of a start from the town, that would begin to cut into some of the things we need to do at the hospital and can serve as a catalyst for further development. We think this is a small bet with a potentially big payoff for a large problem for the town. So we're in favor of moving ahead with this and trying to move Medfield State Hospital from the hypothetical to the reality this year.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
Laurel Scotty, 10 Green Street. I haven't been in this town very long, but if there's one thing I know for sure, if Jean Minio says she's going to do something, it gets done. And all you have to do is look at Straw Hat Park and enjoy holiday strove. That's my case.
Thank you. I'm Jean Minio from Alder Road. Just a quick background, I've also been a member of the Resource Committee of the Master Planning Process for the past three years, since December of 2014. This is a proposal for a cultural center that would renovate the Lee Chapel for the Performing Arts Center and a building next to it for an educational center. This is a proposal that's integrated within the master plan, and it has been for quite some time. It has been endorsed by the Master Planning Committee. The plan is essentially done. You will see a single preferred use coming, but the master planning process comes with a package that includes zoning regulations and design guidelines. Those are the last pieces that are being put in place now. All of that will be ready. It's projected in the next month, in June. So within the master plan, the cultural center does several things. It maintains public access to the property. We've heard that's a priority from the community every year for several years. It activates the core campus with public programs, and it preserves the chapel, another key piece of the hospital property that we've heard from the town through the years. It's also expected to improve the assessed value of the rest of the property. It'll increase the attractiveness for developers, and it can help with the long-term absorption of any future housing units should the town decide to develop the rest of the property. In short, it's a key anchor for the rest of the development. What's important to know with this is that the Cultural Alliance is committed to raising these funds, both to renovate and to operate this cultural center going forward with no ongoing town support. So just to clarify a misstatement that was in the report that you got, the town actually applied for the grant, and the grant was $50,000. I was able to confirm with the state that Medfield has been recommended for funding. I got that word on Friday. We don't know what that amount will be until June. That funding will go to the town of Medfield, not to the Cultural Alliance, but that grant has a requirement of a direct one-to-one match that has to be raised within 12 months, and that clock starts ticking in June. So what this project is, is for the schematic phase. We've done a feasibility study, we've done a market analysis, we've raised money to do our own, have a third party do a financial analysis for us. This is a logical next step within the process. The total project budget for this phase is $115,000, so the Cultural Alliance will be raising another $40,000 to $50,000. Again, it's a one-time request to save the municipal asset of the Lee Chapel for public use, operating independently of the town's budget. So the article, as Mike Markucci said, is really for seed money to attract the private investment with significant returns. It's also a precursor to the state's other larger capital grants of about $700,000 a year, which we would be able to apply for annually. So the bottom line is that this is a grant from the state that is coming to the town for this phase, and you, as the voters, are asked to provide this one-time seed funding and be the smallest portion between the three partners as a catalyst for the private investment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jean.
Russ Hallissey, 11 Ledge Tree Road. This is another example of an item that we need to consider that really has a broad base need throughout the town, like the schools, like the rec center. This is cultural items that are most likely already included in the master plan for the state hospital. But I'm speaking on my involvement with a few organizations in town of the many, board member of the Lowell Mason House and a board member of the Medfield Alliance Club, and then also as a chairman of a couple of projects in Memo, Medfield Day, and summer concerts for some 15 years. These three organizations are an example of many in Medfield that have events through the year involving fundraising and social events, often centered around cultural programs and activities. We even have a couple of Memo businesses that will benefit from performance areas up there. Medfield currently has limited options for accommodating events, as well as having to deal with the challenge of parking throughout the town. These organizations and all the others in town will benefit from the incorporation of the cultural uses at the state hospital grounds by creating new venues as options for our events with adequate parking. These small funds will help move forward the decision on what level of cultural uses will be included in the hospital master plan, and in effect, will help the master plan committee in moving forward with their decisions. So I support this.
Thank you. Okay, this is my required time check at 10:30. I'm going to deem that we are going to finish tonight. So I really would appreciate, in fact, beg you to try to stay through the last two articles that will move through with dispatch so that we can maintain our quorum. This is like running a marathon and stepping off at 25 and a half miles. So please, just stick with us to the finish line. Steve?
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. Steve Nolan, chair of the Medfield State Hospital Planning Committee. I just wanted to give my support to what Mr. Markucci said and to what Jean said. Although the plan has not been presented to the town yet, we've done a huge amount of outreach to the town, and a couple of themes that came through loud and clear were to try to save the Lee Chapel if at all possible, and also to try and create some public uses up there that would draw the town and make the town proud. And so the committee has been encouraging Jean's group in their efforts to bring about this cultural facility at the core of the campus, which I think, as Selectman Markucci said, would sort of activate the site and be a significant draw for whatever else the town decides to do up there. So I think this is a terrific effort on Jean's part, and the committee supports it, and we hope you'll vote to approve this. Thanks.
Thank you.
Bob Chorme, 36 Harding Street, speaking in support of this motion. We want to thank the warrant committee and all the committees across the town who have worked regularly and actively toward understanding what this hospital site means to the town, both its costs and its risks, but also its future potential. The words were used that it was premature to be considering this article, but I believe it is very timely with regard to the topic of the motion, which is this grant from the state. So dollar-for-dollar match from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, if contributed by the town of Medfield, supported by private donors as well. We have this partnership, and the whole purpose of this partnership is to improve, redevelop, and activate the state hospital by addressing the very core and heart of this campus. This work will indeed increase the value of the entire property and make it attractive to others, therefore providing an economic benefit to the town. In addition to that, once it's up and operating, it will become a point of interest and attract interest from outside of the town, as well as being publicly accessible and enjoyable by Medfield citizens. So it becomes an economic, long-term economic interest to this town as well. So this is not a motion that we really want to delay, to put up a yellow light. We really want to turn this light green, want to start turning this property around and make it work for Medfield and for our enjoyment, and therefore, I urge everyone to vote in favor of this motion.
Thank you very much. Last comment. Microphone number two.
Hi, Bill Pope, Four Crane Place. I'm speaking in support of Article 18. I believe it's very important at this time for the town to show some support for the project to convert a couple of buildings on the state hospital site into a cultural center. In 2014, when the town purchased the state hospital land, I think there were a lot of people who thought that this represented an opportunity to do something great up on the land that we could all share and that we could all enjoy. Clearly, there's going to be a fair amount of housing up there, condos, apartments, perhaps housing for the elderly, and I think the challenge then has always been to strike a balance between private development up there and future public use. And I think that the cultural center, the planned cultural center, goes a long way towards striking that balance by creating a place that we would all have access to and can enjoy. Everyone knows the state hospital site is a beautiful place with views of the Charles River, gorgeous fields, wonderfully-designed architectural buildings, and a campus-style layout. It's an ideal place for an art center, an inspirational place, a perfect place for artists to create, to work, and to perform, and it would achieve the goal of continued public access and enjoyment of the site, one of the main reasons we purchased the land in the first place. Jean and her people have donated hundreds of volunteer hours over the past few years and have come up with a very well-thought-out, well-designed plan to build this cultural center, and I believe it's extremely important at this time to show them our support, to give them a relatively small amount of seed money to keep the project going, and I believe the return in our investment will be great. It will become a real asset to the town that we can enjoy for many years, so I urge you to please support Article 18.
Thank you. Let's put Article 18 to a vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Because in a couple minutes, we're all going to depart quickly, I do want to, I want to thank the warrant committee for a lot of work, beginning all winter, and I want to particularly thank, if I could, Barbara Gibbs, who served, you know, with great commitment and dedication to the town over the last many years, and also to Nick. Now, Nick has, he can call me forever, Scott McDonough, because I have been torturing his name for six years up here, so please feel free to call me whatever you want, but thank you particularly for your wonderful service and your dedicated service to the town over these last six years. Thank you. Just one other thing, we've been spending a lot of money, but free, I want to thank Carol Reed, Dr. Marsden, for the program. You might have received a card for these free opportunities for mental health resources and mental health services. So if you haven't got a card, there's a card on the table, but this is a very, very important initiative here in the town. Carol? We have two more articles. Yes. Exactly. Thank you. Okay, Article number 15 is an article to appropriate funds at the owner's project manager and architect for the addition to the center at Medfield, the Council on Aging. You can find it on page 52 of the warrant committee report, and we don't have a positive motion from the warrant committee. Do we have a positive motion? Please.
Bob Heald, 8 Carol Anne Drive, Chairman of Medfield Council on Aging. Article 15, move that the town appropriate $150,000, said some to be raised on the fiscal year '19 tax levy to hire an owner's project manager and an architect and/or other design professional to prepare schematic plans, including investigatory site work and cost estimates and construction plans and bid documents for an addition to the center at Medfield. Said appropriation to be subject to voters' approval of a capital exclusion override pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), so-called Proposition Two and a Half, Paragraph I, One Half.
Okay, well, thank you. So do we have a report from the warrant committee?
We do. Article 15 appropriates funds for the owner's project manager and architect for the center. This article asks for $150,000 for an owner's project manager. The proposed expansion would add approximately 3,000 square feet to the existing building at an estimated cost of $1.5 million plus additional operating costs. Because of the current and future costs and the total expense burden on the town at this year, the warrant committee recommends dismissal of this article.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Microphone one.
I'm exhausted. Okay, and everybody else, I'm sure. Roberta Lynch, Director, Medfield Council on Aging. Thank you for letting me speak to Article 15. I want to say that we had this article two years ago on the warrant. It was Article 38, but it was dismissed, I think it is, on that consent calendar because we were told it really wasn't our turn to look for an addition. But at the time, two years ago, we were really finding that the building, as beautiful and lovely and magnificent as it is, which I'll get to my notes in a minute, I'm sort of ad-libbing here, our participation is so great now that our, some of our programs are finding the space very tight. Hard to believe, but it's true. So Article 15 is about the current and future needs of the COA, so we can continue to provide the much-needed supportive services and programs to people as they age and grow older. We don't use the word "old," we say "older." At the June 2, 2003 town meeting, the Medfield Adult Community Center Committee presented a planning for the future building of 12,000 square feet. Unfortunately, the article was defeated. After working with the architect and reducing the size of the building by over 4,000 square feet, it was presented and passed at the April 26, 2004 town meeting. The center is now 10 years old, and on January 7, we had a wonderful celebration of the 10th anniversary of the building. At that time, when we opened, honestly, we had about 330 active participants that jumped from the FAFF Center to the new building, and our average daily participation was 30. So really, that building seemed really huge to us. But yearly participation, and I have done over the many budget seasons, I've given these bar graphs to show the warrant committee how we've increased as my budget has increased. But it continues to increase, and currently, we have almost 1,000 active participants that participate yearly, daily, monthly. It's very busy, and those are only the people we can track because of the scan card that they, you know, fill out paperwork and they get a card, they scan in, they punch what they're there for, and we can track how our activities are doing and the number of people coming into the building. So now, back in 2008, we had about 30 people coming in daily. Now we have an average daily attendance of 89, but Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays are our very busiest days, and we're well over 100. So Article 15 is addressing the need for more space for supportive programs that are critical to individuals and their families as people age. Here are some facts. We are an aging population. Human longevity continues to increase, while my research indicates that birth rates are declining. Every day, 10,000 adults turn 65 in the United States. In Massachusetts in 2016, the number of seniors 60 years and older surpassed the number of persons 20 years old and younger for the first time ever, and that will continue to increase until 2050. In 2008, when the 60-plus population, excuse me, in 2008, Medfield's 60-plus population was 1,866. Since then, currently today, the 60-plus population has increased 49%, according to Carol Mayer, our town clerk. The town census for this year, the population for 60-plus is 2,761. Our three classrooms are scheduled 90% of the time during the week. And just a tap on the back, we received a $23,000 grant from Metro West Health Foundation so that we can open on Saturdays until the end of this year. Growing older provides many challenges. I have very large- I have very large print, that's one of the challenges, when you hit 60, you can't see anymore. The COA is available to help individuals and families deal with these challenges. We assist on a regular basis individuals who may be dealing with falls, loss of vision, giving up their license, memory loss, depression, transportation, housing, health issues, fuel assistance, other benefit programs, and simply aging, to name a few. We provide a variety of activities and programs essential to a successful aging. We offer 14 exercise classes each week. This is where you'll find certified instructors offering $5 classes, yoga, zumba, tai chi, to name a few. And we say we're a 50-plus community, so where can you go for a zumba class for $5 Thursday at 10:00 a.m. and starting on Saturdays, June 2, at 9:30 a.m.? Throughout the year, evidence-based programs on healthy living, nutrition, fall prevention, diabetes management, chronic pain are offered. We offer multiple social outings and events, cookouts, dine-around evenings, supper clubs monthly, and as socializing, being stimulated and engaged is one of the best ways to prevent isolation and depression. We provide seminars and information for those close to retiring. We offer opportunities for people to volunteer and connect with their community. We invite moms and dads visiting their adult children to come and participate at the center. And of course, the medical equipment loan program is a great benefit for all Medfield residents. We know that young families move to Medfield for the amazing school system and the wonderful community. The COA is a resource for you, as you may be sandwiched between parenting and your own parents. The COA participation and programs have outgrown the current building. Article 15 is addressing an immediate need and for the future. We know the senior population is growing in Medfield. We know that human longevity is increasing. We know that there will be an increase in population from the housing developments that Medfield is and will be experiencing. On behalf of the Council on Aging, I hope you have a better understanding of what we do and that you will consider Article 15, so that our goal, to enhance the quality of life, promote independence by providing programs, social events, referrals, supportive services, can continue to develop as we meet the growing needs of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Microphone number one.
Bell Ringbound Street. I'm in favor of Article 15 based on the demographics that you just shared with us, and I want you to know that we have a wonderful leader. She deserves a lot of applause. I came to this, I came to this town approximately two years ago, and I was in rehab for two years, and obviously, I came to this town with a lot of vulnerabilities. One is the device I'm speaking with you tonight. I have a love-hate relationship with this, but I want to say, one of the first things I did when I moved to this town was to visit the center at Medfield, and that was a great decision. I sat down with our leader, and he gave me what the center had to offer and how it might fit that need. It's one of the best decisions I've made. The center is a very vital, up-to-date community. Now, I know the demographics you shared, you need to vote, but I want to present myself as a fact, and the fact is, the center provided me with a quality of life that is absolutely priceless, and we, as the center, represent your return on investment. And I want to say, just like the youth in the town, we do love, live, and laugh. I don't want you to forget that. And I hope you will continue the act you once did you provided for this center and vote for Article 15, so this vibrant community can go forth in the future and do the job that it's doing now. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Final comment. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joanne Coons. I live at 166 South Street. I was the Council on Aging Director in Medfield for five years. After that, I was the Council on Aging co-director in Wayland for 12 years, so I think I have a modicum of intelligence on what a Council on Aging needs. When the senior center was built 10 years ago, I went in the building about a week or two before it opened, and my first thought was, this place is way too small. Council on Aging directors don't act in a vacuum. We talk to each other. We also talk to the Executive Office of Elder Affairs, and I know Roberta, as well as the Council on Aging and the Building Committee contacted these people and got guidelines for building construction size, et cetera. Since then, since those 10 years, people ages 50 have aged into, that's 60-plus, including myself, and I take advantage of some of the programs there. Roberta has some great evening programs. She got a grant for Saturday programs. The building does need to be expanded. I would request that people vote positively on this. We do need the extra space, and it's a wonderful service for the town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Got one more comment here, and then I'll come to you to finish up.
Very quick. I'm Courtney Solner. I live on Rocky Lane. I have young children. I do see the point. I work at a nursing home as an occupational therapist. I see clients between the ages of 60 and 100 years old. I just wanted to throw out the idea of maybe adding a pool to the facility for aquatic therapy, for joint discomfort as a form of exercise. I don't know if that's ever been discussed. The other option would be to consider adding some kind of pool to the FAFF center, both for children, reduce rate swim lessons, as well as for the needs of older adults.
Thank you. We actually have discussed a pool in the past, and it's part of the reason I'm standing up here, but that's another story for another day. Okay, this is a little comment, Greg.
Quick question. The experts in the room are the permanent building committee. I would like to know what their opinion is of moving forward with this project is.
Michael?
So let me clarify a little bit about the permanent building committee, and I'll be as quickly, I'll do it as quickly as I can. Part of what we adopted last night was new bylaws regarding what our role is. Our role is not to sit here and tell the town which projects they should move forward with. Each department that you've heard from that have requested funds for capital facilities have done so on their own. Should you approve those projects, we then take over, and we will run those projects and make sure they're executed in the most cost-efficient manner. So we don't take a position until the project is under our purview, so we have taken no position on this article.
Greg, Mr. Markucci.
Yeah, if I could speak briefly to that. I mean, as part of that bylaw, however, and not to contradict Mr. Quinlan, I mean, the Permanent Planning and Building Committee will be establishing a facilities master plan for the town and responsible for updating that. The Board of Selectmen voted against this article because we do think it needs to be part of a broader discussion of facilities in town. This article is not a referendum on the work that the Council on Aging does. The Council on Aging does tremendous work. We get tremendous bang for our buck for what they do, and so this is not a negative comment on that at all. It's not to say that the work is unimportant or less important than other things. It is a 10-year-old building. It's one of our newer buildings in town, and if the projections that were done and the analysis were done at the time were insufficient, we made a mistake, we should have done more, you know, shame on us, but we do think this process needs to be looked at more broadly, where the programs could be done, how these buildings can work, and go through the new bylaw that's been established yesterday for the Permanent Planning and Building Committee as part of an overall facilities master plan for the town. So this is not a no forever. This is not to say this is not a legitimate request. This is certainly not a comment negatively on the Council on Aging, and it's not even primarily a financial comment, because, I mean, the numbers that are here, there's not a lot of analysis necessarily behind this number and this size, and there's no guarantee that this expansion will also be insufficient, might not be insufficient in 10 years. And so we think there has to be more thought that goes into this. We need to go through the process with the Building Committee, with the Selectmen, with the Warrant Committee. This is not to take it off the table forever, but it's not quite, you know, not quite there yet from our perspective.
I just want to, the woman that made the comment about the swimming, that I worked with Brad Harris at the Kingsbury Club, and we do have an adult swim, a senior swim, on Mondays and Fridays at 10:00 a.m. And again, you can just get your little scan card from us, and then you go over there, and it's a $5 hour of water aerobics.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, and I hope that you might vote in favor of this article. Thank you.
Okay, that's great. So we're ready to go. So this is a motion on the table from the, excuse me, from the Council on Aging to appropriate $150,000 of funds for the owner's project management and architect for the addition to the center at Medfield for the Council on Aging. So we'll put that motion to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Can I see a show of hands, please? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? I'm going to deem that the motion fails to carry, so. Final thank yous before we make the determination of free cash. Conrad, thank you very much. I had him gather counters. I was so sure we were going to have some of these articles that might need to be counted. I bothered him at his brother-in-law's wedding in Florida over the weekend, so thank you for being ready, Chief Meany, and all of the people in our public safety officers and the school department, thank you very, very much. And to you, thank you. So our final motion is going to come from Tom Marie, Chairman of the Warrant Committee.
Article 46, move that the town authorize the Board of Assessors to use $3,214,000 from free cash in the Treasury for the reduction of the tax rate for the fiscal year 2019. Oh, I apologize. Nope, that's incorrect. I was actually, the number that I just referenced...
Strike that.
Strike that, please. The number that I just referenced, which I spent five minutes over at the table with the accountants and the nice staff in our town, that number is actually the override amount whereby the Selectmen will be meeting this Thursday to sign the warrant for a special election that will take place on 6/11. So with apologies to all present, Article 46, move that the town authorize the Board of Assessors to use $1,450,000 from free cash in the Treasury for the reduction of the tax rate for the fiscal year 2019.
Okay, questions or comments on Article 46? If there is none, we would... Mr. Harney? Yep.
From free cash, John? $1,450,000.
Okay. If there are no questions or comments, we'll put this to a vote. All in favor of Article 46, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have a motion to dissolve the 2018 Medfield Annual Town Meeting. Second? All in favor? Thank you. June 11, right on your calendars. Thanks to the Warrant Committee, thanks to our finance team, thanks to our executive board here. Thank you very much.